It's painless, like being at the dentist, it's painless. Good afternoon, this is a workshop, Tuesday, the sixth day of March 2007, it's approximately four 17. This meeting was posted pursuant to Code Section 551.041. This is a workshop to discuss two items. First item, discussion regarding the status of legislation from the district judges to add two courts. And the second one, discussion regarding the space allocation on the fourth floor of the administrative building. So we will start with item number one, discussion regarding the status of legislation from the district judges to add two courts. So whomever is going to make a presentation to us. Judge, yes sir?
Good afternoon. Now, I was standing where the Herald said this morning. Judge Alejandro and I, and by the way, all the district judges are here except for Judge Leal, she's in a big case right now, so she has to be excused. But prior to this meeting, Judge Alejandro and I met with Judge Coscos to discuss this issue. I don't know whether you had any opportunity to discuss it with the other commissioners or not, but, and we also met with Representative Renee Oliva, and basically where we're at right now is that we're trying to seek a district court which will handle no less than 50% of family law cases, and then the rest, the balance of that, whatever other cases, will be assigned to that by the district clerk. And we also discussed with Judge Coscos and Representative Oliva the figures regarding this type of court. And thanks to Judge Alejandro, he came up with the figures, which would be basically a wash of what we have right now through the magistrate that's handling these type of cases and his staff. And if you have any questions about the figures, I'll let Judge Alejandro speak on that because he's more aware of what those figures are. But at this time, we are requesting a resolution, hopefully with your support, that we can present to the state representatives and state Senator Lucio in regards to this issue, and also to have this workshop in case any of you have any questions regarding this issue and this proposed bill that we are looking for. So I'll leave it up for questions from the commissioners.
Judge, is there any reason why we would not want to make this a full family court, a specialty court that addresses family-type law versus a 50% or anything?
I think it'd be better served for all the citizens to leave some kind of leeway there, since we haven't had any specialty courts up to now, to leave some kind of leeway there so we can have other cases also be able to be filed in there. Now, as I mentioned, the bill calls for no less than 50%, which means it doesn't have to be 50%, it could be a lot more than 50%. I can tell you now, as far as my court is concerned, I'll be sending all my family law cases over there, but it's going to be up to the individual judges to handle their family law cases the way they want to handle them. So that's, to answer your question, just to give a little more leeway there of other cases that we may need help with, but there is a need for a family court to handle those trials and those kind of motions that are being, that need to be heard and they need to be moved on the docket.
How many, how many family law cases are heard currently, let's say on a monthly basis or quarterly basis?
Does anybody have the stats?
Or do you have a backlog? I mean, can you give us some numbers, something to go on?
And I guess, Judges, where I'm going with is that if we have a family court right now that is listening to, is listening to 100% of all the cases, whatever the number is, and we create a new family court which we can, which we can transfer, let's say, the monies from this one over there, why would we not want to continue it being a full-time, 100% family court? If there's a need for it now, why would the need be reduced to something different if this creates, if a new court's created?
Well, first of all, the magistrate that's handling family court, family law issues is not handling 100% family law. I mean, his court is, but he's not handling all of the family law cases, okay? We still get divorces and modifications in our courts. He's just handling some of them. The district judges assigned some of the cases for him to hear, but not all of the family law cases are handled by him. They're still being divided amongst the six courts and the magistrate, so that's a difference there in that area, not for the statistic he has.
I'm sorry, it's not black and white in terms of the statistics on family court, because every, all the district courts have family court jurisdiction. All the district courts, with the exception of one, send their family court cases to the present master. The master pretty much takes care of the plain vanilla, simple things. The moment it starts getting complicated, things change. They immediately object to the master and it comes back to us. Usually what we see is in complicated cases with regards to marriages wherein people have been married before or accumulated things before.
There's divorce, so many divorce cases.
Yes, sir. And there's issues, as you well know, Judge, there's issues of separate property, there's issues of contribution, there's issues of modification, and when you start applying some of the called-for formulas under the family code, it gets very complicated. And they all go back to the district courts. So the need to have a district court with general jurisdiction, with half of it being in family, is so that, first of all, it cannot be appealed from there. Secondly, all the complicated issues primarily get heard by a specialized court. Thirdly, it gives some flexibility, so that if in fact the family filings start going down, then we can increase that because it has general jurisdiction. And as important as anything is that we have agreed among all the judges, and we have unanimity on this, to request that the district clerk file no less than half of the new filings to this new family court, so that it's going to come up with a new docket, and if we have a particularly difficult, complicated case that requires some specialized experience in that area, we hope that that person going into there will be someone qualified within that area.
Okay. I just think that my concern is just going from a 50% to 75% to 100%. Is that a big deal to you all, whether it's, whether the bill reflects it's a 50% or...
It's a big deal for two reasons, Judge. It's a big deal, first of all, because it maintains the general jurisdiction character of that court, it provides for future flexibility. The nature and character of the 29 years that I've been practicing, of family law in particular, has changed drastically. We used to vary, when I first started practicing law, it was common to see divorce decrees that were two or three pages long. If there are children now, you don't see one of those with less than 25 to 40 pages. A lot of it has become a lot more complicated. The formulas for dividing community property and contribution between separate property and community property have been, come increasingly difficult. So in terms of consuming time, the consuming time of the district courts, if we are relieved of some of the family court burden, that will allow us to handle, to be a little bit more productive. And I'm very proud to say that in December, when I joined this team of district judges, you know, we are very blessed with having some of those productive district judges around.
Well, and I think what you're doing, Judge, is you're adding, you're kind of answering my question, because whether you're aware of it or not, that, what you're saying is supporting what I believe is a 100% family court, because you need to have that.
I disagree with you.
Okay.
If you have exclusively family court jurisdiction and the filings start going down because of alternative dispute resolutions or whatever, then you don't have the flexibility on that. And in the future, my sense is, we're planning for the future. So if we're planning for the future, we need to have a general jurisdiction court with emphasis on family law that can handle a lot of, a lot of these complicated, time-consuming issues. I mean, last month, I tried a child custody case, and you know, it just dragged and dragged and dragged, but it was very important to the parties, extremely important to the parties. And it had some complicated issues in that. Had I been relieved of that, that would have helped me. However, however, at the same token, with the increase in mediations and increase in alternative dispute resolution, we're starting to see the dynamics of civil cases and family court cases changing completely. I think it's important to have flexibility in the future.
Well, I think that the plan is that at the next legislative session, we plan for asking at that point, depending on what our budget looks like, for another court of general jurisdiction. And that's the plan for the future, because I mean, initially, that's what y'all wanted. You wanted a, two courts, one general jurisdiction, and the other one quasi-family court, right? Initially?
No, sir.
Okay, then tell me what y'all asked for originally.
We asked for a general jurisdiction court, a district court specialized in criminal law.
Okay.
And that one was bad.
Well, isn't criminal law a specialty court?
Correct.
Right? So you can't hear any civil cases in that one, right?
Criminal law is a specialty court, but what our request at this time reflects is the economic realities of the economic impact of the county. We presently have a family master. That family master has a salary of a hundred and some odd thousand being paid by the county. The support staff is also being paid by the county. If we go with a general jurisdiction court with emphasis on family law, it relieves that position, one. Secondly, the economic impact of the county is less because it's already budgeted, and the pay for the new district judge coming in would be state-paid, not county-paid. So just the economic realities and our, you know, and our understanding of the impact of the county, we're very aware of that. So we decided that we'd change it, first of all, to a general jurisdiction court with emphasis on family, to provide us the flexibility and relieve the burden, the economic impact to the county.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Judge, I guess you're going to have to draw a picture for me. I'm having a problem with the fact that you want to limit it to 50%.
It's no less than.
No less than 50%.
It could be 50, 60, 70, depending on how many cases we all send over there.
The amount of fam, the idea is that, and we have complete agreement on this, is that we will send the majority of the new filings to family court in the new court. And we can do that by a united district court order to the district clerk's office. So that takes care of the future. In terms of the past filings we have, we would transfer those cases to them, and that would depend on how that court is doing. So the idea is that the court will handle no less than 50%, so it specializes in family law, but it gives us the flexibility in the future. And one of the trends that we're starting to see is a lot of criminal filings. You know, we're starting to see, that's one of the nationwide trends and statewide trends. It, we think that it's going to require another criminal law court in the future, but we all handle that. We all handle that. And that frankly, is, in my opinion, is not an area that is quite as newly complicated as the, as the family law issues.
Judge, may I ask, if I understood you correctly, you said currently, all of the judges are sending their family law cases to the magistrate's family court right now, except one judge? Except one? Well, so you've got a court now that has, I assume, a pretty full docket, the magistrate court handling family law right now. I assume it's pretty full, I don't know.
They're pretty full, but it's uncontested matters primarily.
Yeah.
The moment it gets contested and complicated, they object to the master and it goes back to us. And you have the double expense of the litigants.
Yes.
And the expense of the county as well, because you're having to deal with it twice.
And so I'm assuming that then, if this is set up, you're not, you're going to be looking at those cases before you send them over, before they're filed over there, so you may be, all of you may be keeping some of them? The five that send them all over now would be keeping some of them?
Commissioner, if we will give orders to give the clerk, to the clerk planning of non-family law cases over there, and that's why we asked you to close that, so less than 80%, if we want 80% over there, you know, it would be directed to me and to me and over there. The whole issue here, I think, you force the force focus on, is that we don't want to limit the flexibility of this court. I think it's very important to keep that in mind, because that gives the flexibility of the county and the citizens of the county. So that's the whole purpose of the caveat of 80% minimum, but I can assure you that once it's created, even the judge is not in case over there, it will be 80%.
That's, that's what I'm thinking also, so it's going to end up being a lot more, probably, now, more than 50%.
I would, I would think that it's going to be more than 50%, so why, why not say not less than 60 or 65? I can't see it being, staying at 50.
First of all, let me clarify one thing, okay? Because I think there may be some confusion as to what the present magistrate is doing. The present magistrate is handling mostly divorced cases, okay? And like Judge Nelson said, mostly uncontested divorce cases. Now, there are other, a lot of other cases and motions that are filed that are, that are called family law cases, that magistrate is not handling, like modifications, adoptions, terminations, what else? A lot of other cases that that magistrate is not handling. He's handling mostly divorce cases, okay? And, and not all the divorce cases either. So he's just handling a part of the family law cases that are being filed, not the whole 100% of the, of the family law cases.
Commissioner, I have to say that there's a greater concern if you write an all liability practice standpoint, a lot more than a case for the voters. But my point is that we can achieve that without having to tie the hand to that court for future use and give it flexibility, not knowing what's going to happen with the filings that are filed by our children, dispute resolutions, other progress programs that are taking place off state that haven't been implemented here. And so that's, that's the whole point here, to give the county flexibility to you have that court, whatever way it comes, that meets the needs of the county. If the needs of the county are 95% family law, so be it, you have that flexibility. But if you set a standard up there, and if it's a limited court in terms of general jurisdiction, that's a follow-up for the need maybe, I mean, for a law.
What is the consequence for not doing 50%? Yeah, let's say that the bill says 50%, and for some reason, it's 48% or 45. What is the consequence to that court? What do you do?
Well, then I would think we imply, that court would be inclined to that, and that's, that's what burdened all the counties, burdened all on the district clerk and judges to be sure that no less than 50% is being charged.
And secondly, we were prepared to issue an order to the district clerk to file no less than 50% in that court. And if that order's violated, it's a violation of court order, which is contempt.
Because I agree with Commissioner Thomaio in the sense that 50% to me, and maybe we're just, maybe just dealing with a number here, but I think it's a symbolic number. If you're telling me that you pretty much know it's going to be greater than 50%, then what's the harm of making it a 75% family law? If that's what you're suggesting, that, oh, we're going to throw everything out there, I mean, it's going to be way more, it could be, then why not just put it in the bill, the 75%? Oh, I understand the, having the flexibility, I understand that, okay? But I think that we have a, I think that the issue is here to develop a specialty court to handle, unfortunately, a large caseload of family law-type issues. And I'm just wondering, is, or would you all be completely against doing it a 75% family law?
Well, one of the, the reason there's no less than 50% came about is because we had a meeting with State Representative Renee Oliva, and in that meeting, we talked about these issues, about the filings of family law cases, about the flexibility of that court, calling it general jurisdiction with emphasis on family law, et cetera. And it was his suggestion, and also with our consent, that that figure be used no less than 50%. So he's carrying the bill for us. I mean, yes, we can dictate to him, but I assume he knows what he's talking about, what he can carry in Austin, and what he can think will pass over there. So that's where that figure came from, from our meeting with State Representative Oliva last week.
Do you think that he would have a problem with adjusting the bill to the 75%?
I have to speak with him. I haven't talked to him since then.
Okay.
I think, I think you're missing the point here. It does not matter if 50% or 60% of practicality, if you use somebody to focus on the flexibility of the court, because why do you want to set yourself up for something that you may not even have a road, that's the whole question. And I think it's in your order, and I think if you get hung up on the back of the road 75% or whatever, because you can't lie, and I can't tell you, I'm just wanting to do a 50%. If you, if you're presenting, you may not get it up for it. And so you want to have a specialty, if you go 75% and only one, you're going to have 35% of, 200%, right? If you said whatever you want, that's not what we want.
But the 50% was an arbitrary number that someone picked out of the air anyway. It could be, it could be 10%.
You know why? Because the justice that's addressed with that, and I have you, who were talking about family law court, right? Which in our district, that's not what you felt would be that suited, that is what you were to say.
Right.
So then, we discussed that with Representative Oliva, and by which our district felt that we can invest it, counties have that type of ability, and we concur with it.
I realize that all of your courts are really overburdened with cases, because the numbers I see are better than what happens in other counties, for example. And having the flexibility, I think, I think you, the judges, will be monitoring the numbers of family law cases that go here, and you're probably going to be monitoring them fairly strictly to get the cases over there, to get them taken care of in that particular arena. But that arena also having, as you're calling it, more flexibility to do something later on or even now, is, I think, probably a good planning tool to be using. And certainly, it allows, or I guess would eliminate, a lot of the cases that you're talking about that currently go to the master's court and then get kicked back for other issues, you know? And if y'all can get those concentrated over in one area where you can deal with more of the cases you normally handle, you're still going to, I'm sure, be handling some family law-type cases that, Judge, that you've mentioned, the different types that come up and the different things that come up, but you're going to be the ones monitoring this thing and making it work, and the flexibility of it seems to me to be a reasonable thing to be looking forward to. Someday, you know, maybe not the next legislature after this one, but maybe the following one or something, it may be time to be looking at another court. And, you know, the criminal court might be the one to look at, or depending on what the caseload goes and how the different activities of handling cases come about and how they're put together, so. I don't have a problem.
It's the obligation to be monitored. I think in particular here, there is a commission to make sure we serve family law communities. And I think the year passed, the court is improving all of those against the others, really it can't be where we are now. Where we are now, you have a lot of complaints, a lot of people going to the family law court and reporting and others from one side of the court, you've got to come back to the district court, you've got to waste your time, you've got to find money, you have to order things in the hearing, and they can't go forward with the hearing. So, you know, this court itself, the rest of all the decisions, they will be part of what happens to the judge, everybody for this judge, what they have to go forward. And I think as the commissioner showed, there's evidence in their self-explanations, that we are all in the current agreement, you have the district court assigned, a higher percentage of cases, all the cases on that court, so that we can handle the family law, not the wrong, regardless of your opinion.
So you're, you're talking about not less than 50%, and are you looking at a ceiling? Or are you just saying, let's say, you know, let's just pretend that, and I don't know what the numbers are at the present time, but let's say that it, that you have 95%. It gets up to 95%. I mean, are you all looking at a ceiling for it, or...
Okay, well, let me tell you, let's talk about a ceiling, all right? The way the system works right now is we have six district courts, and all the cases that come in are filed on the six district courts. Now, how are they filed? The district clerk is in charge of filing all those cases in the six courts, and they have to be filed evenly in every court, so that every court has approximately the same number of cases, okay? So no one court has more cases than another. So that's how this will work also. When we create another court, it's going to come into the system where it has to have approximately the same number of cases that the other courts, the other district courts have also. So as to how many family law cases, how many of the other cases are going to be involved, we don't know yet until we start filing. And another thing that comes into play here is, since we have the six judges, some judges may want just 50% of their, of their family law cases to go there, other judges may want 100% of their cases to go there, until we find out how many cases are flowing into that. We can't answer that right now, because of the numbers that have been involved that represent each court. Did I make myself clear, did I confuse you even more?
No, that's... Judge, I have a question, and you'll have to bear with me, and this is new to me. You say this is a family specialty court. Does that mean that no criminal filings will be filed in this court, ever?
No, that's why, that's why we're speaking, that this is a, not a specialty court, this is a general jurisdiction court with emphasis in family law, which means that at least 50% of this case are going to be family law cases, at least 50%, which means it could be more, it could be 50, 60 or 70%. So therefore, as Judge Alejandro was saying, we have room there as a general jurisdiction court to file other type cases in there, other criminal law cases, or other civil cases, or whatever other type of cases are needed to be filed in that court. So it's not strictly family law cases, that's why we wanted a general jurisdiction court to have the leeway, or the flexibility, as he said, to file other type of cases in there to relieve the other courts if necessary. And if things change in the future, we'll have that flexibility to file other kinds of cases in there also.
Another thing, we need to talk about that, is that, because our district, which is going to pay the all, that you call, that criminal case, that you know, that's what pays, that's what the county, the jail, the law, that you want to go forward, you have a judge that has that general jurisdiction, that just has anything on, or that court makes fights, and the family law court will be able to. So that's the whole point of my question, really, to do it.
In other words, you don't want to tie your hands?
Exactly. And I think that there's a way to pay now, and all of the charges, you give it our capital.
I know that, you know, some of your cases get long and drawn out, and you're tied up with them for long periods of time, and I, from what I've seen, sometimes cases that need to be heard are certainly the clients that would like for them to be heard a lot sooner, get postponed and delayed. And I realize that in family situations, those are things that can't happen. I mean, it may happen, but probably it shouldn't happen because you've got, we've got kids involved sometimes, or just people trying to get divorced, whatever it is. Those need to go, go on and be moved on, and I think, you know, as the master's court has done to a degree, I'm sure, relieving y'all of some of that, and relieving the timeline for people to go on with their lives, having something like this, I'm, you know, I kind of feel like y'all are probably going to be, again, the ones monitoring it and the ones...
The other thing I wish that if, if something like that happens again, that you kinda talked to us beforehand, so we can help you with that, with that legislative process, sort of hearing it from, you know, from somebody else in, in the back door. Uh, but, but needless to say, I think that, that y'all bring some, some good points, and I think I, as one, agree that, that financially, it's not quite gonna be a wash. I think we'll have to expend, uh, some money, hopefully it's under eighty thousand dollars. Um, but I think that's what it's gonna be. So I think the, the consensus at some point's gonna be, well, do we want, you know, a, a specialty court like they do? I think you mentioned about Hidalgo County's got some, you know, they have some specialty courts, right? They have a drug court, probate court?
They have some, uh, magistrate, so they hire county courts, they have a great general agency.
Yeah, they're not specialty courts, they hire magistrates to handle, let's say, handle all this criminal docket here.
Like, like what we've done with, with a family court environment. I mean, we, we, we've done the same thing.
It has the same things we have currently right now, except they hear, they have specialty court, criminal, criminal and family, but again, it's the same nerves we have here right now, and there's our family, uh, there's the magistrate.
Okay. I, I think maybe what I'm thinking about also is, if this gets set up and gets started January of oh-nine, uh, then come legislative session of oh-nine, that we're not back in the legislature asking for another court, because all of a sudden, this has become a, a totally family court, or totally whatever it's become, and we're not wanting to see this being a general court to where you can listen to everything, except fifty percent, then our, our burden getting to a point where then we need to set up a magistrate court, or a master's family court, in addition to what we've already got set up. Uh, I think, you know, we're not looking at doing something like that, we're trying to solve the problem now with, uh, what y'all are proposing to go forward with.
I remember I was here the one time that we had, we mentioned about us looking at the jail, and we had another court, and we talked about, uh, we do hear criminal, uh, district court, and we don't, you know, because, you know, you guys expect us to handle the jails, you guys expect us to, we don't know, we talk, I think we care very well, but that was data, and, you know, we understand that right now, five hundred people are not ready for that, but yes, you know, I know for sure I would want to go to the next day, but we look at a criminal court.
I think we need to do that, yeah, yeah, we need to do, I think we need to do that. I think we need a criminal court.
I think the other issue here, and I don't know if this is appropriate to touch on this right now, but certainly within the panorama of what we're talking about, is location, you know, humans, it, the commission decides that, uh, that's what's here.
Judge, as you know, uh, we started a, the preliminary capital improvement plan, something that we had talked about at our meeting, because one of the issues is where are we gonna put these, these new and improved, uh, courts? Whether it's the one now, we have a place for it, I think, okay? We just substitute what's there now and try to make it some kind of a permanent court.
Right.
But in the future, there's this other one that, that we may be contemplating, or y'all may be contemplating, uh, doing, we're gonna have the same situation, where are we gonna put them? Uh, and that's something that needs to be addressed as well. That's why I would hope that if y'all get this urge again to, to ask for another court, that, that we kinda, kinda share our thoughts, because, you know, our thoughts is try to help. But, but it's kinda difficult when, where are we gonna put these guys, you know?
Well, first of all, let me, uh, kind of apologize, I guess, on behalf of all the judges, but I, I think in all candor that, uh, we're probably where we kind of, uh, went astray, is that we, we had a meeting, uh, I think it was a juvenile board meeting, and, and Judge Costco's happened to be present, uh, as one of the board members, and, and then once we concluded, we talked about, uh, pers- going, about two courts, and I think he understood one thing, and we understood another, and so that's kinda where the misconception took place.
And that, and that's the second part of the workshop, to talk about, uh, you know, I understood it was what are you gonna do with the fourth floor? And I say, you know, I support a family court, we'll do whatever you're gonna do, so we're gonna talk about that, but, but having said that, let's just, uh...
Anyway, uh, I think that the issue here is, is, uh, one of location, and, you know, you talk about the fourth floor, and, and I'm sure that's something you're gonna deal with down the road, but, uh, in today's session, but I think it's important, and I know Judge Lopez and Judge Lial and I, uh, were assigned by the judges to look at space, look at the space on fourth floor, also go out to the jail and look for space out there. Uh, we had been told that, at least when it was constructed, that there was supposedly some space out there for a district court, or eight court, I should say. Uh, and so we went out there and looked where they're, and we also looked at the second floor. And as you well know, the problem with the fourth floor, as far as any courts over there, is the issue of security. And, uh, you know, when you have a family law court, uh, I think if you, if you see what's happened over the last few years, some of the more volatile cases of, uh, incidents in courthouses have taken place as a result in family law courts. And right now, uh, when, uh, the family law court meets, uh, over there in, in your old chambers, uh, when they're not using one of our courts, uh, they don't have any security over there. I think they have a bailiff now, but certainly no security to have to clear in entering the building. And that poses a real threat, uh, to the participants, uh, and the employees of the county, and so, uh, I think that the most practical thing to consider would be to somehow focus strictly in the judiciary section of the building, uh, and that leads us really to the second floor, is the only place where there's possible space that could be reallocated in some fashion, uh, for these, whether it's the, the new court that we're talking about, assuming that you approve it, uh, or any future courts, uh, let's say an additional court down the line. And by that, I mean because you have security there going in, uh, and, and all, that section is all secured. You have ways to, that's where the prisoners are brought in, uh, through the tunnel, over to where the, the county courts are and the district courts are. And that's the one that makes the most sense. Now, you say, well, how are you gonna relo- relocate space? I know one of the areas that's being under consideration, and I've talked to the district attorney, is his area. And at least in discussions we've had in the past, I'm not sure, I haven't talked to him in the last week or two, but he certainly seemed to be amenable to, uh, relocate from that space and use the space on the fourth floor, which is some of the space we had talked about, uh, taking up for judicial purposes. That would make sense, uh, because his offices are administrative in nature, we could allocate that space to, you know, outfit a courtroom there, uh, and, and you have the secured flow of prisoners from the jail to that floor, or for that matter, for family law purposes, anybody that makes an appearance there, uh, would also have to go through security. The other issue, and it's a totally different issue, that, uh, it gets back to the issue of the second floor, and, and again, you're looking down the road, because it's, you know, you're only looking at one court now, and that is the issue of the justices of the peace, and the area that they occupy on that floor. Uh, if, if the commission was to say, okay, we wanna look at that complete four to be judiciary court, uh, space, then that's another area that you could contemplate down the line. And obviously, that would mean you'd have to consider some other place for the JPs to go, but that's an issue that y'all need to think about. I just think it's appropriate to talk about it right now in terms of, uh, if you do approve this resolution, and we do, are successful in getting this court, we need to start thinking about where it's gonna go. The other reason that's important from a timing standpoint is that I know that there's been discussions, and I think even approval, I'm, I'm, I don't know all the ins and outs, for the, uh, renovation of the third floor, and the district attorney's area, and the second floor. So to the extent that you're gonna expend any money in doing that, you may wanna revisit that subject in terms, particularly if you're thinking about, okay, let's go with a, a court on the second floor, it wouldn't make any sense to go in and spend any money and build any offices for the district attorney if you're gonna allocate the fourth floor to him, or, or the third floor, whatever other space. So I think that's why it's pertinent to talk, for you to consider it at this point, uh, at least in your discussions, as you're talking about, and whatever expenditures you're gonna make, okay?
Judge?
Yes.
Talking about security, um, what kind of security breaches do you all have? Or what happens when, when JPs use the courthouse on weekends, uh, either to arraign people, or marry people, or whatever it is? Isn't that, is, is the security thing on at that point, or can people pretty much come in freely?
Now, that's a concern that we have, is that, uh, there's been a history of that, where the, uh, marriages are conducted there on the weekends, we have no security.
And so the elevators aren't secure?
No.
Right? So anybody, okay, in other words, they have, anybody can come in and have access to those courtrooms?
Precisely.
Uh, do y'all keep your doors locked, the hallway doors?
Yeah, the courtrooms are locked, but, uh, you know, people can go up and down the hallways.
How about the hallway doors?
No, they're, those are open, as far as I know.
Okay, the, the hallway doors that go to your offices directly, those are open?
Mm-hmm.
Those are not locked?
Right. The ones in the back?
They're locked.
Okay, come on, the third floor, they're, they're locked. But, you know, remember, they go up to the second floor, and those, those, I mean, that's really where, where the JPs are, and they can get back to the back hallway where the, as far as the county courts are concerned.
Well, you know, that, that, that is just as serious as having a family law court on the administration side. I mean, if, if people have access to your courtrooms on weekends, for whatever reason, um, Maslino, we gotta figure something out. Either you don't let the JPs use it on weekends, or, or use some, or do something else, because that is, that is a serious security breach.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
It happens on Saturdays and Sundays, he says, that's when these marriages...
I mean, but that's, I mean, that's something that, that, that needs to be cured, like, like, real quick. Did y'all know that?
I didn't know they used them.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's not, I mean...
Yeah, that, that should be something you ought to consider.
Either that, or you have a, a, a constable, or, or somebody there that's monitoring, uh, you know, the elevators at, at a minimum, the elevator, or lock them up, or something, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't have, on weekends, there's nobody in there.
I thought the constables were covering that. I think in some situations they are, are they not?
Not to my knowledge, no.
What was, what was her question?
Uh, Commissioner Lopez, she thought the constables were covering that, but not to my knowledge.
I thought they were doing that.
There are some constables in that building, there's some space, office space there, but I don't think they're, uh, there on weekends, that I know of. Anything else?
Judge, um, like for arraigning people on a weekend, do we not use the magistrates at the jail?
Yes, th- those are using the jail.
So basically, um, we're opening up the courthouse just to marry people, is that, is, is that what's going?
That's our understanding, uh. And speaking, by the way, uh, we're talking about, since we're talking about capital expenditures, uh, the other thought and recommendation Judge Lopez and Judge Lial and I came up with, is that when we did go to the jail, and there was really no space at the jail, uh, there's a couple of areas in the administrative, administration building that are areas that, uh, I guess, could be used in some fashion, but I'm not sure, uh, you know, what, how the sheriff, those are areas where some of the mole problems are in that building, uh, and they're not being utilized, I think they're trying to repair that. But I think something that would make a lot of sense, that we've talked amongst the judges, is that it's for us to, or for the county to consider, uh, building some form of, of courtroom out there. It doesn't have to be a full-blown courtroom, but some form of courtroom where, uh, we could go, the judges, and I think all the judges are in agreement to do this, is to do our arraignments, we hear our criminal dockets, we could go there, uh, and do the criminal dockets there, uh, and motions to revoke, a lot of those people are usually in custody. Uh, but certainly arraignments, when they first get indicted, that they come in for arraignment, uh, we could do that, and that would eliminate the transportation of those prisoners to the current facility. It certainly makes a lot more sense from a economic standpoint, certainly from a security standpoint. And, uh, and we would take our staff over there, uh, you see the district attorney people will be there, and in many instances, you accept whatever pleas you're gonna take, which we normally do at the, uh, at the courthouse on Harrison. So that's another thing that, uh, as you look at capital improvement projects, that I think would be fairly inexpensive to do, uh, if you could do it within a current facility, if possible. Obviously, if you have to build a new facility, that's all in itself a different issue. But, uh, I, I do wanna make you aware of that, because that's something that we have talked about, I think it makes a lot of sense. Uh, I don't think it'd be a court that we would set up to try cases over there, because I don't think it would be, uh, really proper at this point. But certainly to do call our criminal pa- uh, docket over there, and, uh, do our arraignments, and e- take any pleas, anything of that sort. So, so thank you very much for your attention.
I would just like to mention the fact, and I know it wasn't done by design, and it's already been mentioned, that it, it would have been helpful if you had come to us before, uh, approaching our legislators. I got a, a quick phone call, just saying, hope you support this. Well, I, I'm not for a quick phone calls, I'd rather have discussion, uh, before, so I, I'm sure it wasn't by design, and, uh, you were motivated and wanted to get it done, but, uh, having to find out through other sources, it's not the way to go.
Yeah, I just wanted to add something. There's two arraignments that occur. I, I think I need to explain that, so you can understand it. When somebody's arrested, then they have to be arraigned within twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, okay? And that's when a bond is set on them, and they can either bond out, or they stay there. Then the second arraignment occurs when the person's indicted, or a complaint and information is filed. So that's the second arraignment occurs. And that is what Judge Alejandro's talking about, the second arraignment for us to go over there. It does not take away from the magistrates doing their arraignments over there, because that is the initial arrest. Okay, so I, I did wanna explain that. And I wanna go along with Judge Alejandro that, you know, for us, the second floor is the best place, but in all fairness to our district attorney, you know, we sort of have to make that decision, well, I think, you know, within the near future, so that then he can make plans, because if we don't, you know, allow him, give him our say, whether we're gonna use the second floor or not, then that causes problems for our district attorney. And I have spoken to him, in fact, I spoke to him a few days ago, and he is in agreement, but I think in all fairness to him, we need to tell him as soon as possible, are we gonna take over the second floor or not? And so I think that's where we also need your help.
We're gonna discuss, the, the second item is to talk about space allocation of the fourth floor. Maybe we can discuss that specifically when we go into the next item, but also before that, uh, we also have an item on the agenda today to discuss repairs, I think, to the Carisales Rucker. And maybe in, in that spirit, we can, we can ask whomever we're gonna get to do this, to look at what it would take, that, 'cause you said that there was a, Lial, did you tell me if there was a, there's a space up there, or you told me there's a space up there where they were, they could build something?
Yes.
Or it's an empty, it's a shell, or what?
There's a couple of areas in the administration building, uh, where there would be ample space to build, say, a courtroom. Uh, I'm not sure if the elevation, I think the sheriff or the judge, they could have planned to use that space. Though that space, one area in the picture is an area where they have a lot of mole problems, and they still have some insulation on, uh, and binging out, but that's what is the building itself. Now, I know that, uh, there's a warehouse out there, I'm not sure where all the people are from that, so, uh, I'm sure maybe if you have an existing structure, or you can go in there and not do something, it takes a lot of effort, but you gotta build something without...
All right, well, we'll talk about that at the next meeting, or this, this evening, and maybe we can incorporate that into what we're gonna do, all right?
Thank you.
Any other comments on item number one?
the second floor or not, then that causes problems for our district attorney. And I have spoken to him, in fact, I spoke to him a few days ago, and he is in agreement. But I think in all fairness to him, we need to tell him as soon as possible, are we gonna take over the second floor or not? And so I think that's where we also need your help.
We're gonna discuss, the second item is to talk about space allocation of the fourth floor. Maybe we can discuss that specifically when we go into the next item, but also before that, we also have an item on the agenda today to discuss repairs, I think, to the Carisales Rucker. And maybe in that spirit, we can, we can ask whomever we're gonna get to do this to look at what it would take, that, 'cause you said that there was a, did you tell me if there was a, there's a space up there, or you told me there's a space up there where they were, they could build something?
Yes.
Or it's an empty, it's a shell, or what?
There's a couple of areas in the administration building where there would be ample space to build a courtroom. I'm not sure if the elevation, I think the sheriff or Judge Lopez, they plan to use that space. Though that space, one area in the picture is an area where they have a lot of mole problems. They still have some insulation off and binned out, but that's what is the building itself. Now, I know that there's a warehouse out there, I'm not sure where all the building is at, so I'm sure maybe if you have an existing structure or you can go in there and not do something, it makes a lot of sense. You gotta build something around that.
All right, well, we'll talk about that at the next meeting, or this evening, and maybe we can incorporate that into what we're gonna do. All right?
Thank you.
Any other comments on item number one?
No, I think the judge, we might, well, the district attorney, the judge, uh, who are the, uh, who are the courtrooms?
How can we? As much as we try. All right, anything else on item number one? All right? Item number two, discussion regarding the space allocation on the fourth floor of the administrative building.
Judge, I think the reason Judge Alejandro mentioned, is exactly why we have the item on the agenda, before we go any further on design on the second floor, we wanna make sure we get some direction from the court. I think it's clear what the use of the third floor is going to be. But in meetings with the district attorney, we were made aware that, you know, there were some different possibilities on the use of the fourth floor. And so that's really what we need to get direction on is what use is the fourth floor? Is it gonna be for the district attorney or is it gonna be for the family courts? And I think the DA is here and I don't know if he has any comments.
You're talking about our old commissioners' court?
Yes, exactly.
Well, I think that, and if it's okay with whomever the powers are, I think Judge Alejandro's comment about trying to keep it over on the judicial side is obviously a good idea, for security purposes, and then we're gonna have to just re, I guess redo use.
Right. We don't, we don't have absolutely any problem moving, relocating, as long as we get equal space to put all our people in. And it makes sense, from our perspective, to have them all together in the same building because of security and also because of the tunnel. We, we've been hearing the discussion on the family versus general jurisdiction and from our side, we always look for more judges to hear the criminal cases and we figure that at some point, whether it starts off specialized, that eventually they'll probably hear some criminal cases. And in order to hear criminal cases, they have to have access to them through the tunnel and there is no access on the administrative side of the building. So we would, we're all for whatever the court wants to do, we just didn't wanna spend any money or start doing anything and then midway through, stop and have to relocate somewhere else and waste that, that kind of effort. But we're willing to relocate. If there's a way possible to break through the stairwell to get us in and out to the other side quicker, we would work with whoever's doing that. We've already, some commissioner courts sessions back, we've already hired an engineer that has preliminary plans, we've already paid him for some of the preliminary plans. So we just don't wanna spend anything more until we hear where you wanna place this, but we're all for going to the fourth floor.
For all the different reasons that y'all have brought up, that the judges have brought up, security and being together and working in a more cohesive manner, it has always seemed to me that y'all would be better off having the third and fourth floor of the administrative building.
Right.
And you know, you can control the access coming into it, like you do now. No, no one can get through unless they check in with someone and someone unlocks the door, even after they get off the elevator. So it seems to me, as long as there's enough space on those two floors to accommodate the needs that you have, and I know you've got some growth projections-
Right.
It would seem to me that that would solve a lot of our problems and perhaps yours and also the court's problems by having you in that administrative building.
Right, we, I mean, it allows us to have access where they can't get to the third or fourth floor unless they have business with us. And we're in the courthouse on the weekends and after hours and we've had to institute security for our prosecutors, so we have our investigators stay late with anybody that's in, that's under my control at this point, when they're working late because it gets dark. It's about to start getting light now, but right now it's dark at six o'clock, so I have workers that leave that need to be escorted to their vehicles, we've had a lot of break-ins in the parking lots. And so we have our guys provide security while we're there. If we're there on the weekends, we have people there watching our personnel as well, but we don't really interact with the JP's too much. And that wouldn't be a problem with us if we're on the third and fourth floor, we wouldn't have to worry about anyone else bringing anybody inside like we do right now, where we have, we're kinda scattered all over the place, so it's kinda hard to really protect everybody. It's hard for our IT people, our phone systems, because everybody's kind of in any, every nook and cranny that we can fit. So in actuality, by moving us to one central location, it would be ideal for the IT, the phones, the security and everything else that we need, that everybody needs to use at the same time, as opposed to buying multiple sets of books, multiple sets of access to west, things of that nature, we could centralize it. So we're all for putting us all in one spot together, third and fourth floor, where we could work with that.
Judge Alejandro, what was your, we briefly talked about what you thought the best scenario would be in terms of creating, where we're gonna place this new court over on y'all's side of the building. You suggested moving, tell me, can you kinda tell me again what-
Sure. Well, first of all, I think you're quite right with your question. I happen to use squarely, uh, the fourth floor and be able to say, I say able to be, I'm trying to say from second floor. And you really, it's a little bit more square footage on the fourth floor than in the second floor, so I don't think you're gonna lose anything. Uh, but feedback to your question, Judge, you have the area where the DA is right now on the second floor, that's one area. The other area is sort of just meat park. And I think if you're gonna utilize that space, have lines, and just say you're gonna be okay to just eat another building, administrative building, then the only option is to eliminate that hallway on that side of the building to give you ample space to be able to leave and work from there. And I'm not here to answer your question.
Yeah, it does, it does.
Our current location, Judge Commissioners, mirrors Judge Magdalio's courtroom. So where we're at, we're right underneath her, so that entire space would be one-
Where you're at now?
Right.
That'd be one entire, and it's one of the large courtrooms that we have.
We have two large ones and three smaller ones, four smaller ones, the one downstairs as well. But where we're at mirrors the exact space that Judge Garza had and now Judge Magdalio Lopez has, so it's a rather large area. It would be one of the giant courtrooms that we would have.
Pete, has, have you seen any plans that address what they're talking about? Moving, moving the DA back over to the administration side, what you're talking about, right?
Only on the, yeah, only for the third floor. We hadn't done anything on the fourth floor because we were waiting to get direction from the court.
Okay.
But if it's a consensus of Commissioner's Court to do that, I'll place an item on the agenda for next week to take the appropriate action.
Okay, just so we understand, so this would be to basically move the DA's office from where they're at now over to the administration side, and then where he's at now, convert that into another courtroom? And then what do you do with the JP? Just leave them there for now, or what?
The JP's, what the Judge Alejandro was saying was if you additionally added a second court-
Oh, okay, in the future, okay.
In the future, the second court, that would be the other area that we could grow into and relocate the JP's to a variety of locations. I mean, I'm not sure-
So there's enough room where the, where the JP's are to create an additional courtroom if we need to?
Right.
And then where you are now, build that out to be the new 444, whatever this is there?
Right.
Okay, and then, and then you'd be willing to move over to the-
Fourth floor.
Fourth floor of the administration, which is, what's there now?
The, uh-
Nothing.
Is it, is that, what is it?
They're there right now, the DA's office.
Yeah.
Well, where, where are, are the, where's the family court meeting now?
That's where it's meeting.
Where the old-
Oh, so there is something there now?
The old commissioner's court.
Okay, so there is something there now, okay, okay.
Right now, it's CPS court, the family court, we're, we're just kind of-
Where would the CPS court go if, if, let's say we made all these changes, okay, and y'all get the court and everything, everybody's happy. Where does CPS go?
They would, they would also go to the new courtroom that we're building.
Okay, they, they would share that with the family court? Is that what they would do?
Well, I don't think we really talk about that.
Yeah, that, that hasn't been thought out.
We've discussed that, so I'm not sure how that would work. But right now, that's what they need sometimes, just not even have a court, there's a kind of a court in one of our courts. So I guess that goes back to the issue of looking at additional space.
How far, I mean, how often does the, does the CPS court meet? Twice a month, twice a week? Twice a month?
They need twice a week.
Oh, twice a week?
And Chicago has one in Wood.
Okay. So then, so then we still have a problem. If we give the DA the whole fourth floor, what's, now, who's in the third, who's on the third floor?
That's the space that you've already allocated to us. We were gonna be on the second and the third.
Oh, so you, so you're talking about taking over the third and the fourth floor, right? Okay. So then what's left? Where do we put CPS?
Well, that gets back to the issue of JP and-
Yeah, that's, we-
Well, so that, I mean, all we're doing is deferring a problem because in two years, whenever-
Exactly.
You go, go ask and ask for another district court, that's gonna be the place that we would go, that we could, where does CPS go at that point?
That's where they were going, Judge, you hadn't caught on, they said in the future.
Right.
And that's what they were referring to.
Well, the, the other problem is-
No, but they never talked about the CPS court, they're talking about the criminal court.
I know, they didn't mention it.
By putting the, the family, the new, if we get the new 44, 444, CPS would still have to use it on the administrative side. The only thing is that on those, the clientele that we have to deal with on the removals at CPS is even slightly more volatile-
Yeah.
Than the ones we deal with, that they would have to deal with on family. Because those are ones that we normally are also charging criminally, because removing their kids from their custody and it's usually not a, it's not agree upon. I mean, we're having to, to basically fight very strangely to remove the children from the parents, so there's a lot of volatility there. So if they were also screened before they came in, because some of them are on bond, some of them, most of them are facing criminal charges, and they can come up and down the fourth floor right now without anybody screening them or checking them for anything. So that is a problem, even if you keep the 444th up there as far as security on that.
In the design of the second floor area for courtroom, y'all were talking about that particular area that you occupy right now would, would be a, big enough for one of the larger courts.
Yes.
What if the design were made to make it the size of one of the other courts and still have some space left over to design for, my personal thoughts would be like an entity like Costa or something like that to accommodate the kids and everything when they're there waiting for family court and these types of things.
Because that's a very serious situation. That environment, I think all of us have been exposed to it. We had even talked about, you know, you needed a holding area for families and so on, so that's, that's a biggie, that's a big problem.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a large, it's almost double the size of Judge Alejandro's, I mean, it's gonna be-
Is there room on, where you're at now, is there room to put in two courts?
It would have to-
Maybe one medium, one small or large?
You could probably do it, but I think the engineers or the architects would be better suited to tell us that as to how the schematics would look. But we had, what we had pushed forward and had approved was the taking up the hallway space too. So we actually were gonna increase the size of our DA's office on the second floor because of the restrooms we needed, we had to go into the hallway. So we were actually increasing the square footage that I don't believe the judges were aware of, and we had actually passed it through the, with the fire marshal and the city of Brownsville and whoever we had to clear it with, but we were actually going to increase it this way as well. So there's additional square footage there for possibility of another courtroom or the offices that you're talking about, Commissioner Lopez.
And I'm, I don't think there's enough room to get any more credit to the state for the office, even to add an addition for two courts. I don't think that there's, because a family court who wanted to have that area for two courts and-
And that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
One court, a family court, and then an area to accommodate the needs of the kids and the families that are there.
That holding space for the children, for the children, or something for the children, but-
Someplace to accommodate them.
Two courts there. And that's what we need, you know, we, and honestly, we need where the babies are. Okay, we're just trying to keep a lot of, you know, we need to kick it out and all of that stuff, but we need to-
The problem is, there's no place for them to go, right now. You know, in the future, we need to plan for someplace for them, there's no question about it, but right now, y'all can be finished and have another courtroom built long before we're able to provide some other place for them.
Right.
Yeah. But eventually, they, y'all do need that area.
Yeah, but you know, we're looking at that, we said-
Yes, needs to be looked at.
That's where we're going, especially since the security issues, we only have one room and everything, so.
Well, the, the problem is, the one we ran into when we tried to take some of the library space, when we tried to possibly take the cafeteria space, it creates, it creates a lot of ill will. I mean, we had to battle it long and hard when we were in the library and they, they finally won out and we had to vacate. But there's space there, it's just that everybody's willing to face the reality and put priorities on what is necessary in that building. You know, and that's, because there's space on other parts, like across the street and the, with the old jails, there's space there that could possibly be used, but like I said, those are ideas that probably need to be thought out a little bit more, but there is space still in the courthouse, it's just space that people aren't willing to give up without, without a long time.
Mr. Villalobos?
Yes, ma'am.
The area where Commissioner Wood and my husband used to have in the old sheriff's area?
Yes.
Do you still have any office space there?
No, we were, that's why we're kind of squatting on the fourth floor, they kind of booted us out of there. I think Tony and the elections administration were very anxious for us to give up that space, so we had to kind of move everybody up to the fourth floor. And it really creates a problem for us because they keep moving us and it's, it's a big hassle and it's a lot of money because we keep having to put phone lines, computer lines, and take Marcelino's guys to go move desks and boxes up and down. So right now, we have vacated everywhere else except the fourth floor. And on our second floor, we have some space that the sheriff's office will let us use over in Almito when we send somebody over there, and we have people in San Benito.
And we are actually actively looking at some other possibilities to help alleviate some of the office space that's over there in that particular area and also in the administration building area that might, I think would definitely benefit everyone that's over there in the judicial building and like yourself, that'll be going in the administration building.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
Anything else, Pete? So you know what you're gonna do?
Put an item on the agenda for next week.
He needs to match his lawn, if that's what-
I'm sorry, Pete?
I'll place an item on the agenda for next week, so we can take the appropriate action.
And y'all, you know, y'all may be thinking about where we're gonna put CPS on there, okay? So, 'cause right now, I don't know where they're gonna put them, if we continue what we're, yeah, our-
My suggestion, we've got a meeting of our judges, Lieutenant Capello, Judge Diaz, Judge Lopez, to look at that stuff. And my suggestion, certainly, is all right with it, we'll assign them to do that again on the CPS.
Can you do that?
There are some issues with the central briefing room, the use of that, the time that they use, the other space that might be available, and we really, and we wish this, I would like to be getting at it, and so we'll look at that and try and report back to you by next week.
Can you include somebody from, from Pete's office and also maybe Marcelino as well, sorry, from the DA's office? I know you sent me the list who was on the committee, but can y'all include, are you on that committee, Pete?
Hondo Garcia from our construction management division.
Okay, okay, whomever, just so someone's involved in that, okay?
Judge Lopez, if you don't mind, I will be going over there to meet with you all or go around the building and see, okay? Thank you.
Anything else, from anybody? All right, workshop's adjourned. Give us five minutes and we'll start our other meeting. Good afternoon, this is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court, I forgot my- dated March the 6th, 2007. The meeting was supposed to pursuant to Government Code Section 551.041. And as we do all meetings, we will start with an invocation by Thomas Carruba, pastor. Please rise.
Lord, we just thank you, Lord, that we're able to gather here in this room today, Lord. And Godfather, we just ask, Lord, that you would just guide, you would lead, you would direct of all the affairs of the county. God, that I speak, Lord, that your prosperity and your blessings will just be upon each person here, God, the county. And God, Lord, that you would just lead us and direct us in Jesus's name. Amen. And God, Lord, that you would just lead us and direct us in Jesus's name. Amen.
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 Thank you. I'd like to ask Judge Lopez to lead us in the pledge and the Texas pledge.
I only know that, I only know that-
We'll help you.
The United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas one, indivisible.
Good job, Judge. We're gonna take, we're gonna take public comment right now, then we're gonna, we're gonna go to item forty, and I believe item twenty-nine. We'll take those out of order if that's okay with the court. Public comments, John Shergold. John?
Honorable Commissioners, it's a true honor to be here tonight. This is really the first time I've been down here and seen the meetings, and what a beautiful place to conduct business. I came down here tonight to brag on the County Commissioners Court. I worked for a while for the Dean of the Texas House when I was a kid. He said, you know, John, he said, it's always better to brag on people, is it's always better to say good things about people. And so many times, you hear people come down and complain, and they have the right to do. But I wanted to say some good things about the County Commissioners Court. And specifically, my title on my comment tonight was "Public Comments on Public Comments." And everybody probably wonders, what's all John thinking about? You should be commended because you allow the public to come and speak at the very beginning of the meeting. And that's a very noble and very worthwhile endeavor. Fortunately, the City of Brownsville doesn't have the same policy. They may get mad at me for me saying this, but they have everybody speak at the end of the meeting there. And I think that it's, it's an awesome thing that you guys are doing because when the people come here, you actually want to hear what they have to say. It's obvious, it's here on the agenda, you have the people come and speak at the beginning. And really, you know, I'm not here, you know, trying to say anything just to say something nice, but I'm saying it because it's the truth. And it really, you really should be commended. And I hope that you never change it. I hope you never put the public comment session at the back of the agenda. And I know this board will never do that. I know that, because I know each individual on this board. I'll leave you with this, you know, a Roman philosopher by the name of Cicero, he once said that the chief law of the people is the good of the people. And I believe that what you've got here, allowing the public to speak at the beginning, I think has been true in form of that philosophy. And then, and basically, that's what I have to say. Besides, my wife, she's, tonight I was at school, they have open house. And so I had to figure out something to do for two hours except going to mow my yard. So I appreciate you letting me down here and letting me have my three minutes. And thank you very much, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. You're welcome, anytime. Any other public comments? Item forty, consideration, authorization of recommendation to the Civil Service Commission concerning the proposed revisions to civil-
You know, I have a public comment.
Sure, okay.
Let me, I don't know, I don't know where else on the agenda I could do it. But I would like to just publicly acknowledge the fact that Friday of this week, we had a call from our local state senator, needed some help on an agenda item that he had on the appropriations committee. And he needed some help that I couldn't do, and I called the judge, I should say, not Commissioner Gascón. And he was able to contact the right people for us in Austin during the weekend. And this morning, Senator Lucio called and said that the Colonia funding was appropriated at the Senate Appropriations Committee, which is a really good sign. And I'd just like to publicly thank our judge for having made those calls this weekend. I know that I bothered you Saturday and I bothered you Sunday. And I appreciate you making the calls because it looks now that seventy-five more million dollars will be going to the border in this next biennium for Colonia projects. And it was off the table as of Friday and it got back on the table as of this morning. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Item forty, consideration, authorization of recommendation to the Civil Service Commission concerning the proposed revisions to civil service rules and regulations. Who is MB, oh, Manoel, hi, Manoel.
Good evening, Commissioners and Judge. Mr. Villarreal, I guess, is here somewhere. Is Manny here? Well, if not, I'll try to get along without him. Just wanted to call this to your attention. You know, the Commissioners Court being business managers for the county. Manoel, and I thought that it might be helpful, you know, to show you all at least what we're trying to accomplish with the revision to the civil service rules. As you know, civil service was enacted and three commissioners appointed effective June one of last year. And the very first case that arose under the new rules pointed out a couple of glaring conflicts within these rules. And so we began to look at them with a, kind of a critical eye to make sure that they were making sense and that they were consistent. And so the effort that's been rejoined here over the past several months between Mr. Villarreal and I is to try to make for a consistent, readable, understandable set of civil service rules. In hopes that all of management and all of the employees might know the benefits of using those rules. Experience has taught us that everyone is supposed to know the rules. And yet, there was nothing in the rules themselves to say that. So we added one point one nine. You'll see it in red in the attachment to the agenda. The second point, you know, I'm just going to highlight a few of the more important aspects of it, that the employees shouldn't have to fear signing off on the disciplinary forms. One thing that was happening is, management would present an employee with a disciplinary form, tell them to sign it. And because they disagreed with the discipline or had some comments to want to make, they would refuse to sign it. Well, you know, arguably, that created a situation where there was some insubordination even. So what we have done is, we amended the attachments to the rules themselves so that employees know that when they sign, they are simply acknowledging that they have been disciplined and they're acknowledging that they have responded wherever they have actually put in a written response. And so that hopefully will clarify that. And then we amended the insubordination definition to conform it to the civil ser, I mean, the Cameron County Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual definition, which is a little more detailed and more specific to tell everybody what is meant by insubordination. We also learned that twenty-four hours was hardly enough time to be fair with an employee to provide a written response. And nothing was in the rules to take care of the situation where they're let go at 5:00 PM on Friday. If they're supposed to respond in twenty-four hours, who are they supposed to respond to? So we have suggested, and are going to suggest, the Civil Service Commission, unless this body feels otherwise, that we go to a two-working-day rule rather than twenty-four hours. And that should give an employee, you know, enough time to get their thoughts together. You know, these are highly charged atmospheres sometimes. And in order for civil service to really work, everybody ought to have a cool head and time for calm reflection. So we, we've recommended that, Manny and I recommend that. We also learned that the probation section here recently, we had an appeal from one of the sheriff's deputies and only to come to find out that what the sheriff thought that was in the rules, based upon conversations that preceded the enactment of the rules, did not really get put into the rules in the right way. I have talked with the sheriff and with his staff, Gus Reyna, the chief deputy, and Captain Reyna. And all are in agreement that either of the two proposed revisions that we've come up with would be suitable for their purposes on the patrol side. We also had some difficulty with the detention officer aspect of probation because there was a theoretical situation where a detention officer who had not yet pre-qualified by becoming a T-Close certified detention officer, might nevertheless get the benefits of civil service. So we had to fix, we're trying to fix that. And you will see those rules at two thirty-one, and on down for several rules, about six or seven or eight of them. There is also an ongoing issue concerning coverage. That is, whether or not the courts wanted their bailiffs covered by civil service. And I know that we had some judges here, Judge Lopez here, I think, she might like to, like to speak to this issue as well as, I'm not sure if we have anybody else, but Judge Lopez? All right. If it's okay with you, I'll yield to Judge Lopez and let her present that aspect of it.
Is she covering both of those questions that you have on, well, it's not, because I had that highlighted. The first question was, do we need a section for the tax office investigators? And then what should we do with the bailiffs?
Yes, ma'am, that is still an open question. I have contacted our tax assessor-collector about that. And his, his feeling is that whatever is all right with the sheriff should be sufficient for his officers. They fall within the same category as new hired deputies in the sense that they are all T-Close certified to begin with. That's an important distinction between them and detention officer candidates.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. You know, an issue had come up with the bailiffs when civil service first began and all the judges had agreed that the bailiff shouldn't be under civil service. But in July, the judges go on vacation so that everybody knows, attorneys know, their staff. Everybody goes on the vacation at the same time, so we will all be back in court at the same time. And during that time, civil service, somebody went to civil service and got the bailiffs there. And it's like, wait a minute, you know, the judge's staff, the administrator, the coordinator, the court reporter, they're exempt from civil service. They're at the will of the judge. And that's by statute. The administrator, the coordinator, by statute are at a will. And the situation is that, you know, as a judge, your bailiff is there to protect you. Now, I don't know if I would feel comfortable with him protecting me, because I don't know him, but I may feel very comfortable with her protecting me, you know? And, and, you know, that comes down to a trust issue, you know, who is going to protect the judge? Not only that, you have confidentiality issues that come up. I mean, a lot of things that happen, the bailiff and our people cannot discuss those issues. All the rules that apply to me under the Code of Judicial Conduct applies to my staff. They cannot discuss anything that happens in my office. They cannot put political bumper stickers of anybody in their cars. There's a lot of rules that apply. If one of my staff members does not comply with the rule, then I'm held responsible. A Court of Appeals judge was held responsible because one of their staff attorneys had put on a bumper sticker of, I don't know what other candidate. And so the one that's held responsible is me. I'm the one that comes before the Judicial Conduct Board. And if I don't explain that all to my staff and if I don't have control over my staff because of those issues, then I'm accountable. Yet, you know, they got into civil service. I talked to the sheriff and the sheriff agrees with me, you know, with the judges. He says, yes, they shouldn't be under civil service. What happened? And we're like-
Well, Judge, my, my question is, why did the Civil Service Commission do this without even talking to you all about this?
Okay, supposedly, what I was told was that they did talk to us, okay? We never received anything. The way I think they thought they talked to us was by emails, okay? And they would email this issue before the civil service. And so they assumed that we would extract from that, that we're supposed to go there. They never came and said, judges, you know, this is what we're proposing, what do you think? Or judges, you know, we're going to be presenting this, if you want to make any comments, you come. No direct contact was made with us. I think, if any contact, the only thing I could think of is through emails. And most of the judges do not read, you know, emails. I do, but you know.
Are the bailiffs licensed, their T-Close license, is it carried underneath the sheriff?
Yes. The sheriff is the one that commissions them. Commission is the word.
And all of his other employees fall under civil service, except for his administrative staff, I think?
Yes.
Don't they? And, and I know that when we were looking at civil service to start with, most of the bailiffs were right in front, pushing to get civil service established so they would be covered by civil service.
I wasn't there, so you're probably correct. I don't know. I do know that one particular bailiff spearheaded that, okay? But they waited till we were out of town before, you know, they came before the Commissioners Court.
I don't recall that being the case. We- This is Michael. I'm sorry. You don't recall the bailiffs being licensed by the sheriff?
No, no, I don't recall, you know, not notifying folks that that was the case. We went through about six months of the planning process. We had a consultant that visited with every department, every single depart, on the, you know, I mean, we had to kind of tell her to quit visiting departments that really didn't need to be visited because her bill was kind of getting a little high, you know? And we finally put a stop to it, and I'm sure that Mr. Burse remembers that. And they, they visited with the judges. She visited, it was a lady that visited, I don't know, it must have been maybe the chief judge or-
She never did specify, I don't, I don't recall her specifying what judges she had met with.
Well, I recall, but I recall the judges writing a joint letter outlining the people they did not want covered-
Excluded from civil service.
And that was the bailiff as well was in there.
I don't recall the bailiffs being in that.
I don't recall the bailiffs being excluded from there.
No.
Who wrote the letter?
All of you signed it. It was signed by, I say all of you, perhaps you didn't, but there was multiple sign, multiple signatures on it.
Oh, you know, I'd like to see that because maybe they thought they signed one thing and in fact, they signed something else.
Because everyone was asked who they wanted excluded, and then it was up to us to recommend to the-
And I don't think we're saying it shouldn't be that way. We're just trying to flesh out what's happened.
Okay. My understanding from all the judges was that none of us were consulted about the bailiffs. Now, if something was signed, I'd like to see it because maybe we signed it saying, you know, that our staff should not and we included the bailiffs as our staff. I don't know the wording of that, whatever we signed.
Well, let me ask though, if, if, let's say that there is a letter that says that.
Okay.
Okay? And the bailiffs were supposed to be included under civil service, okay? Wouldn't that have taken effect when civil service first got initiated? And if, and if it did, then why did you need, why did, why did it have to be done this past July when you're on vacation? If it was done originally, then why would they have to go back in July when they're out climbing mountains or whatever you do on your vacation?
Or climbing mountains.
Climbing mountains. I mean, I guess my point, if, if, if that's what we're suggesting, that a letter was done, then that should have been, then they should have been included from the onset, from the early on. So then if that was the case, then why would this have to have occurred in July?
It occurred in July.
And that's, that's, I don't know.
I, I disagree. This was adopted in May by Commissioners Court?
Of what year?
May twenty-fourth of last year.
Right. And they just did this-
And it became effective June first.
Judge, if I may-
And you can turn to the first page of the draft that we have there. It was, it was approved by Commissioners Court and adopted on May twenty-fourth and became effective June first. And we had been discussing this since December.
I think the key is going to be to review that letter. And my advice to all your judges, and pass it on, Magdalia, is that they read what they sign very carefully. Because this is an example of what can happen. Well, before I say anything, I want to read that.
Exactly.
Okay, I want to read that.
I think that the letter needs to be brought forth and, and try and understand, and try and see if perhaps there was miscommunication in the document. I don't recall, quite frankly.
Because I personally know that we had a meeting with Judge Henajosa when civil service was going on and we told him we did not want the bailiffs in civil service, the administrators and the coordinators. Of course, the court reporters are out of it, so we didn't include them. But I know we did let our feelings be known.
Well, I resent the fact that you keep saying that we waited till you were on vacation.
No, 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 you weren't. It was a, it was, I'm sorry.
The judges were on vacation. But I, I have to disagree with you totally on that. Because this became effective June first of two thousand and six. And it was adopted prior to that, and we started having our discussions at Commissioners Court in December.
Let me interject something. I think maybe the misunderstanding here is what was done initially and then what was done in July. Correct me if I'm wrong, Manny or Richard, either one. But my recollection is, is that the attachment A, which lists those who are covered or not covered by civil service, was amended in July to designate the bailiffs, okay? Now, I don't recall, I wasn't involved in any of the initial stuff, so I can't tell you, give you any guidance on that. I don't know whether they were originally included in civil service or not. Maybe Richard will remember. I, I don't remember.
No, they, they were not, Betty Springer's the one that talked with everybody that recorded Gage draft rules. Initially, she had all the staff for the judges excluded from civil service. Initially, she had all the staff for the judges excluded from civil service, which included the bailiffs. Subsequently, I don't know exactly when it was, but subsequently in the summer, the bailiffs were added by the Civil Service Commissions under the company.
Yeah, but attachment A was part of the document from the very beginning. There might have been a modification made to attachment A, but attachment A was part of the document.
But the original version of that Commissioners' Court was not, did not include the bailiffs among the list of those not covered, see? Evidently, then it was modified in July at another meeting of the Civil Service Commission. I think that's the sequence of the events.
That's the way I understand it, that they were not a part of it at the beginning, and then in July, something happened and they were included.
Well, there must have been a meeting of the Civil Service Commission.
No, it was a meeting of the civil service. It was a meeting of the civil service. It was not a meeting of this board. It was civil service.
But everything that occurred was recommended by Commissioners' Court?
No, not at the July meeting.
Not at the July meeting?
If the Civil Service Commission was set up and underway, then it was their decision. We all knew would be covered and who was not. The original, all the work that went into creating it all, yes, you all had control over much of that and much of, and of course, who was appointed at that time and all of that. But then, once they began to function as a governing body in civil service, then they were evidently to amend the rules, as I understand, and then include the bailiffs as those...
So they amended the rules?
They did, yes. It was not, it was not this commission. It was a civil service commission.
In their meeting in July, yes.
But that hasn't been amended, that hasn't been changed in this amendment. Because this still shows that the bailiffs are covered by civil service.
Well, I think that's, I think that's her argument. But let me ask you, on the original attachment A, the original one, not this one, on the original attachment A, under the district courts, does it say all?
I'm going to defer to Manuel on that. I can't, I can't tell you.
The original one, Manuel?
The original did not say all. It said the court clerk and court administrator. Let me, I'm sorry for being late. I thought we were the last item and I was working in my office, but I want to apologize for that. But originally, when we were having our meetings, we received a letter from the judges, Judge Lial brought it in, and it stated that they were requesting that the court administrator and the court coordinator not be included. For some reason, they left out the bailiffs. So in July, this letter came to light again, and the bailiffs came before the commission, and they said, well, the judges did not eliminate us from not being in civil service. They only considered the court coordinator and the court administrator. So therefore, you know, they said it was thing was okay to be included in civil service. And based on that, it was all, it came to a conclusion that the bailiffs could be included because they were not in that letter. And that's the only reason now. We're doing this right now in doing, because it's that time, in talking to other counties that are civil service, it tells, they tell us that it takes a year before everybody gets settled down on civil service and understanding it because it's all new to us and every county is unique. So for that reason, we're doing this, going through this civil service rules, and there's certain things that have come up on appeals that set precedence. We had a two-day, a three-day suspension and a two-day suspension conflict, what could be appealed? So then they would determine that...
Manuel, excuse me, let's go back to the bailiff issue. That other stuff, okay?
All right.
Mr. Burris just brought me the original attachment A that I was asking about, and under the courts, district and county courts, it says all positions are exempt. I'm looking at it right here, okay? So now, that's what originally was adopted. Then, somewhere in between this one and this one, it shows all with the exception of the bailiffs. So it appears to me that when this originally was passed, that all people under the district and the county court at law were exempt, were not part of civil service. So somewhere in between there, then, somebody decides to go to the Civil Service Commission and say, oh, by the way, their intent was to have us under civil service, and without having anybody there, the civil service just unilaterally said, well, that's okay, we'll go ahead and put you in there. And that's where we are today. And the problem is that we do not have any jurisdiction by, of changing this over the Civil Service Commission. They, if they're going to do it, they can be the ones that have to change this. We do not have any authority to change this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the way it happened...
That's correct. I'm sorry?
The way it happened, going back, it's, to summarize, it's the same thing. What the judge has just said is what Judge Lopez just said. It happened in July, and the people that went before the commission were the bailiffs themselves.
The Civil Service Commission.
The Civil Service Commission. And we, I mean, none of us were there. We, no, no.
Well, we don't have any jurisdiction over them, and that's why...
Well, I think that, well, that's for another day, but they need to keep us informed. Or somebody, Manuel, where are you?
I think we should.
You need to keep us informed when the, when the Civil Service Commission makes a change because that's a big change.
Okay, well, we do post it and we do send out, we do have a webpage, and we also send out the changes to the employees and departments. We always do that, yes. But, you know, it needs to be, maybe we need to set up a protocol so where I can come and report to you the status of civil service and what their activities are. This is what we're trying to do now.
Well, Manuel, as a courtesy, the Civil Service Commission should have, I mean, contacted or waited till the judges got back. They should have gone to them and said, this is before, originally, we adopted it with all, they want exclusion. If that's the case, that means that any county employee can go to the Civil Service Commission, and depending on what mood that commission is in on that particular day, can change it. So, I mean, I've asked Pete, I took, I'm asking Pete to contact our legislative body and see if we can expand that Civil Service Commission to five or seven instead of the three because, I mean, we need to have a broader, a broader sense of what's going on there. I don't know if we can do it or not, but I mean, I'm going to pursue that because at a minimum, they should have let these people know, I mean, the district judges know. And for them to have been blindsided by that, all of a sudden, they come back from wherever they were going and this is on, they did not have the opportunity to respond, is totally unfair, you know, to the district judges.
But I think the biggest issue here is the precedent that it's setting, that anyone can walk into their meeting.
That's right. That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Well, this was part of the reason why Mr. Biedeal and I wanted to speak to you all about this is because even though, as you say, you have no jurisdiction to order the Civil Service Commission to do anything, nevertheless, you know, I would have to think that the Civil Service Commission would have to listen to this body when it comes to the policy of the county. And if there is something that this body wishes to put forth to the Civil Service Commission for consideration at their next meeting, here's two people that are perfectly willing to do that.
Well, one would, I'll take it a step further. One would think that before they adopted any policy that was going to affect an elected official or a department head, that they would have the courtesy and the common sense to come to this body and inform us and let us know, this is what's being proposed, what do you all think? We may not agree, but they can still do their own thing, but at least at a minimum, just a courtesy visit or a courtesy meeting to let us know.
Well, here again, that's why we're here, you know, because...
Yeah, but there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, this is after the fact.
The cat's out of the bag at this point. But, but, it can be put back in. The Civil Service Commission has powers to make rules and regulations by legislative mandate. And if they can be persuaded, you know, which is what this effort is all about, to do what the judges wish them to do, then so be it. And this would be one aspect of how they might go about that, and the judges are here to listen, I think, whatever aid might be given to them by this body.
You know, and I don't know if it's right or not, I mean, you know, to take the bailiffs out or keep them in. I mean, that's, if a district judge is telling us that they're an integral part of their administration and they're, you know, I know exactly what you're suggesting, then I think at this point, you and the rest of the judges need to go back, you know, to the Civil Service Commission and undo, if they can. I mean, I don't know if they're going to be willing to do that, but at least you got to try.
I have a letter from Judge Udesti, and we're having a meeting on the 12th, and I have put that letter on the agenda for the 12th to the Civil Service Commission. And we will be posting that meeting tomorrow because it's going to be Monday at 10 o'clock, we're going to have a meeting here, the Civil Service Commission. And Judge Udesti sent me a letter related to this topic, and I put it on the agenda for them to go before that commission to rescind this action.
Now, I haven't read, Manuel, I haven't read all the bylaws that the commission goes by. But I would think that when something comes up, and I'll use this as an example, they should invite both parties. Because how can they make a decision only listening to one party? And I think this is, and I know we're growing and it's growing pains, but I think, I would like for you to convey that to the group for me.
We will, yes, ma'am. Well, all these changes you're proposing are only to see if they are willing to buy into the changes and adopt them.
Absolutely. This, as I mentioned there at the top of the first page, this is just a proposed set. There's certainly, you know, these are just things that Manny and I believe would help.
So you mean to tell me that as a Commissioners' Court, we appoint these folks, right?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, you skipped that part when you went to revisions, and I would have hoped that you would have gotten there.
Well, the law is pretty clear that...
Well, the law is clear though, but it says that we appoint three members of this commission and one becomes a chair.
Yes.
The term of office for each member is for two years.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So they're all due at the same time?
Evidently. Evidently.
That's correct.
Yeah, we discussed that.
That's correct.
Two years from the date of the appointment?
They were appointed effective January 1, 2006, so they'll be there till 2008. And since there's no removal provision in the statute, as per se, then they're subject to the general removal section of the law or statute, which requires for cause.
Okay. So this commission that exists today will be there for the next nine months?
Yes, sir.
So we can take action in nine months to remove them all or keep them all? But in the interim, I think that we need to explore the possibility of adding members to that commission so we don't have a situation, we got three. That's, those are my thoughts. And Judge, you know, we may ask you maybe for some letters of support from you all to our state. And all I'm going to suggest is that we add members to the Civil Service, you know, Civil Service Commission, either take it to five or take it to seven, you know, something like that, so you don't have, you know, one or two.
Well, at least five. I would say at least five.
Minimum of five.
And I would, I would like to include also that they be staggered terms, you know, instead of everyone coming in.
Manuel, we can do that, so Pete, you might want to, you know, get with that real quick.
We'll need to look at how we would go about doing that. I'm not sure how we do that, but that would seem to make sense, you know, to stagger the terms.
Just like we did RMA. We found a way to stagger their... I do want to, I do want to thank you for the color coding on this working document.
You're welcome.
It made things easier to review.
The statute doesn't cover staggered terms, but you can create them by simply not reappointing one next January, and then that commissioner would be a holdover commissioner. If you left him in for a year, there would be a holdover commissioner for a year. You could, you could effectively establish staggered terms that way. But there is no provision in the statute as it exists, and if the statute is to be amended to expand, it'd be a good idea to also amend the statute to provide for staggered terms.
Finally, just to conclude this report, you know, we are not the only people, that is, when I say we, Mr. Biedeal and I, are not the only people who are lobbying, if you will, the Civil Service Commission to fix some of these rules. The combined law enforcement fellows from Cleet up in Austin want to have a say in all this, and I think they have, you know, asked to be there and available for the workshop, and they will be heard. I mean, it's a public forum, it's posted, it's a public hearing, and they'll be heard, I'm sure. I know that when it comes to, you know, some of the commissioners themselves have even made, I know that Commissioner Lerma has proposed, for example, that any loss of pay, you know, suspension be appealable. And I know when he was mentioning that at the last workshop, I told him, I said that, well, you know, it's, you know, this is up to, up to the commission to decide, but there they might run afoul of this honorable body because after all, you have some purse string control over the budgeting, over all of that. And if we're talking about giving an unlimited right of appeal to every employee, we might, you know, find ourselves in a budget situation. But these are the things that are afoot. This is, this was here basically just to make you aware and...
Thank you, we appreciate it.
And to let you know what's going on. Everybody's invited, I guess, to this Monday meeting. We're starting at 10:00, I think, with a disciplinary appeal, and we'll go into a workshop thereafter. In the meantime, I know there are going to be several people there to make presentations during that workshop, and whatever voice this body would like to be heard, that would be the time to...
Bruce, on attachment A, this is, this is a draft, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The one in red with the red ink and all that, that's just a draft document.
Is this the proposed language?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because on there, on this one, you still have administrative services and that's been eliminated.
We were talking about that this afternoon, as a matter of fact.
I talked to Pete and Mr. Pulvera, and we discussed that he's going to do some corrections and whatever because it has a far martial, just a thing that don't allow...
Do you all have spell check on this thing?
We try, you know, we try.
All right, second page, just, well, you put question mark, question mark, question mark, training period. You see it in red?
There's not periods.
Are we on the...
It's priod.
Training priod.
On the attachment A?
No, well, now I'm on the second page on B.
Of attachment A.
Under other law enforcement.
Attachment B, second page?
Attachment A, second page.
Oh, okay.
Other law enforcement.
Okay, well, now, some of these marks, you know, Judge, are just to call attention to this.
Well, I'm not talking about the question mark.
Oh, okay.
The training priod.
Word period.
All right. Got it? All right.
Yeah, period.
All right. Okay, anything else?
I believe that's all I have.
So what we want to do is approve the recommendation and authorize it to be recommended to the Civil Service Commission, right?
No, this is a working document.
It's a working doc...
This is a working document.
When do you plan to propose this document to them for consideration?
Well, we have already proposed a great deal of it, but with the understanding that it's a work in progress because we're still gathering input from various department heads, you know, at the same time. But, you know, the gist of what we're trying to do is to simply clarify these rules and make them work, okay? If nothing else, it might be appropriate for this honorable body to bless the effort or something of that sorts, but...
Well, how about if we just, how about if we just acknowledge your presentation and bring us back, I guess, the final one for also acknowledgement? Because obviously, we don't have any choice.
Right.
Right? So why give it our blessing if we don't have any choice?
Well, it's only just, you know...
But I think the one good thing that came out of this is, and I'm sure that Manuel is our representative, so, stand up, Manuel.
Yes, and...
You're our messenger.
Right.
You're our messenger to that commission.
And so you all let me know, and what we're trying to acknowledge is the effort that we're doing in this, correcting a lot of these errors and bringing it up to snuff, so it's a workable instrument for everybody, not just for the employees, but for the department heads. And because we're dealing with elected officials that have statutes that they have to comply with to perform their functions. And so therefore, it needs to be a workable, and we want to make sure that it's clear and everybody understands and everybody can work with it, follow.
Yeah, but you brought it to us to make us aware of the changes that you are looking at proposing.
Exactly, yes.
Do you, my question is, do you want us to approve the recommendation to the Civil Service Commission as presented with the changes you've presented?
No.
No, we want you to look at them, and if you see that, maybe you could interject something that you would like to see in our recommendations, that we can do that.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion to acknowledge Mr. Hodge's and Mr. Biedeal's report? All right, do I hear a motion to acknowledge, um, Mr. Hodges' and Mr. Vieri's report?
All move?
Move by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Benavides. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let me go to item 29. Item 29, consideration and possible action regarding House Bill 1342, and Senate Bill 615, and House Bill 1343, and Senate Bill 614. Who's going to speak to that?
This way?
No, Mr. Benavides.
Yeah, this is a request of Judge Lopez. Um, she wanted an action item, um, following the workshop that we had earlier today.
Oh, this is on the family court?
Right.
All right. But this is just on one, okay, but we have two bills here.
Right, this is prior to, uh...
Okay, so which one is it that, uh, applies to the family court?
Yes.
1341.
Is it, no, it's 13, 1342.
The first one, right?
Forty-two.
And Senate Bill 615.
Okay, so the one that we're being asked to consider is, uh, the 440, 444?
Right.
Right, and then...
Which is the first one?
Right.
The other ones, we're not gonna consider that one, right?
But also, um, the, taking into consideration the discussion that we had during the workshop on the 50%.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, this relates to the workshop that we had, um, that we had earlier regarding the family court. We had a lot of discussion over it, so, um, unless there's more discussion by any member of the court, do I hear a motion?
My motion is that, uh, we approve the, and support, but 100%, that, that, that it be 100% on the family court.
Okay, your, Commissioner, your, your motion is to support House Bill 1342 and Senate Bill 615, which is, which addresses the 444th Judicial District Court with the caveat that it, it's strictly a, a family...
Strictly a family court.
Family court, district court.
That's not the way the bills are written.
We understand that.
But I'm changing it.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's the only way I'll support it. I, I feel strongly that we need, and we need a family court that's 100% family court.
Pete, I'll tell you that, that even the bill here does not, the one that we're looking at, uh, does not even mention any percentage of family cases.
All it says is give preference.
But because of the discussions that we had, Judge, that is why I want to specify that it be 100% family court.
But let, uh, the state rep has indicated that he would not move forward with this, from face what I read in, in Laura's article today. Arti- Laura? 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 In your article today, that, that, uh, I hate to put you on the spot, but it says something like that Renee Oliveira would not go forward with it until he got, uh, I guess, approval from the commissioners' court. Is that what he said? Okay, is that, is that not affirmative? That's correct? Okay, all right. All right, so Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Tamayo's motion is to, uh, I guess what they want from us, basically, is a resolution in support of House Bill 1342 and Senate Bill 615, uh, creating it as a judicial district court, but as basically a specialty court dealing solely with family law matters. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason that I mentioned the 100% is because of the discussion that was held earlier during the workshop.
Okay, I also...
Well, the bills only give preference as presented, and I don't think, it's, the time to find, file a bill has passed. I guess it could be amended?
Yeah, they can add, obviously, because...
Would it have to be amended?
The deadline is Friday.
Friday?
Yeah. But I think they wanted to reach an agreement with, with commissioners' court, um, and I think what they were asking for is a 50% minimum.
But I have concern, I have a concern with that wording, and that's why my mo- my motion is stated as such.
I would like to see preference given to that court as a family court, but I, I don't think I wanna put a percentage on it. Because if there's a slow court in family court, and there's heavier dockets in the criminal court, that means that that judge could not hear cases, right?
Right.
And I'd have a concern with that, you know?
Well, by virtue...
I doubt, I doubt seriously that that would be the case.
Yeah, I, I think that...
And, and I'm just, I, I don't want to jeopardize, because we're not going to be saying who, how the, the cases are gonna be directed. We, we're not in control of that, and, and...
Family cases, yes.
And, well, but which court is it gonna go to?
No, we don't have any jurisdiction over that.
We don't have jurisdiction over that.
Not for that.
I think if, if we, if we make this a 100% family court, that in essence is having jurisdiction over that court.
We don't. We don't have that jurisdiction. We, the commissioners' court does not have that.
No, we don't, but if we make it 100% family court, that's all they're gonna hear.
That's correct.
That's right.
But by virtue that they're asking for a family court is suggesting to me that they recognize that there's a tremendous need for family law type cases, I guess, okay? And if, and if all the district courts, you know, pass all their family law cases to this one district court, I don't think they're gonna have a problem with, with, uh, with not having enough work to do. I, I don't think so. I mean, they're, they're pretty well booked.
And that's going to free them for their other cases by sending those cases, cases to family court. I've...
I mean, I think that the family magistrate was created because there was, to try to alleviate some of the, some of the, some of the caseload, uh, that was currently going to the district courts. That's why it was created. That's why y'all created it. I would assume.
But that was before Mike...
No.
That's when you created it.
Nope. I wasn't here either. All right. Any, John, any discussion?
I, I like, I, I really would like to support it the way it's drafted. Um, shall give preference to family law matters. I think the judges then will develop and dictate how it's actually used. They talked about 50%. I realize it doesn't say that in the, in the bill, but I'm sure that majority of the cases are gonna be heard. There will be family matters coming out of their courts to relieve their other duties. And it does provide the flexibility that they talked about of being able to handle other types of cases in this court, should that arise.
Commissioner Benavides?
I think that's what they wanted. I mean, that's what they said here before, so, I don't know.
Well, they wanted two courts, and they...
Well, I know that.
You know, I, you know, my, my initial instincts were, were to create a, a 100% family court. Then the 50% comes up, and so, well, how about 75%? And so, so we're playing with numbers here, so, yeah, I, I personally would like to see a, a specialty court dealing strictly in family matters. Uh, but whatever the wishes of the court are, fine with me. So I have a motion to, to, uh, to pass, I guess, to support 1342 House Bill and Senate Bill 615, and amending it to reflect it being a specialty court, that being a family court. I have a motion by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second? I'm gonna second it, just to flush everybody out. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, that's two, three. Okay, do I have another motion?
I'll make a motion to support it as it's presented to us in the current House Bill 1342 and Senate Bill 615, second.
Okay, that was moved by Commissioner Wood to support it, uh, okay, but keep in mind that the way it's drafted here doesn't even address the 50%.
I understand that.
It says give preference.
If they don't push them over here, they're gonna have to take care of them in their court, and that's not gonna happen.
Okay, but, but that's not what was discussed. They, they talked about the 50%.
That's fine.
Okay, all right, okay.
Give preference.
Until they're going with it.
Okay, that was moved Commissioner Wood.
I think it's important to note that the 444 district court shall give preference to family law matters. And I, to me, that's gonna be the majority of the work.
All right, okay.
And I wanted stronger language, so, you know, it's just, I, I really have a concern, a very big concern about that.
Yeah, I, I agree. All right, that was moved by Comis-, moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gatsa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Commissioner Benavides, are those, are those an aye?
Yes.
Okay, three to two. All right. All right, presentations. Presentation of resolution declaring February 2007 as National Children's Dental Health Month in Cameron County, Texas. I saw somebody here.
Dr. Gordon.
Were you gonna, were you gonna address that? Okay. Now, what do I do? What do I do? Say thank you?
Um, we're accepting this for Dentists Who Care, which is a volunteer organization where we do free dentistry for indigent children, uh, across the Rio Grande Valley. Um, school nurses are gatekeepers. They find us kids that have dental emergencies or urgencies that aren't covered by Medicaid, that aren't covered by insurance, and have, um, limited resources. And we volunteer to work on these cases. Nobody receives any money, nobody gets a bill, and there's well over 139 dentists across the Rio Grande Valley who do this. We have a mobile van, we go out to schools and community centers that are selected, uh, in part by the nurses, and, uh, we do dentistry. And, uh, apparently, y'all are giving us a really nice award. Thank you for doing this.
Unfortunately, no money comes with it. It's just the rent.
Well, we wouldn't, well, you know, we'd take it for the organization, but not for us. And when it comes to dentistry, only dentists do dentistry, you know? So if we're not out there volunteering, these kids don't get dealt with. And, uh, you know, it's a privilege to, uh, to do this volunteer work, and it's one of the, um, it's fun. You know, I, I enjoy what I do, and I enjoy working with kids, and I enjoy volunteering. So thank you for the award.
Would, would you mind identifying yourselves for the record?
Uh, I'm Nyla Gordon. I'm a dentist here in town.
I'm Catherine Martin, and I'm the executive director of Dentists Who Care. And part of our funding comes from the Community Development Walk Grant Fund, fundraisers, things like that. And just want to tell the commissioners' court that we received a grant last year from the Brownsville Foundation for Health and Education to provide dental services to the kids in Cameron Park. And to date, we have treated 35 kids, and we still have a little bit of money left over, and we are planning on going back. And I had, um, about eight dentists, I think, did it over about three weekends. They actually worked on Saturdays and Sundays to do this. And they were just really pleased with what they could do for these kids, and just thrilled to have the opportunity. And they like it because they can get out of their office and see some other type of need, other than what walks in their office a lot of times.
And one of the times while they were there, I was there to be able to observe what was going on, and you could tell that they, they were happy about being able to provide the service to the kids who really need it. And it certainly makes a difference in someone's life.
It does, and we appreciate the support of the commissioners' court and the entire Rio Grande Valley, because that is how we started with the dentists and then the community support.
Well, I think we as the court, uh, wanna thank all those volunteers, and I know a lot of those dentists personally, and they're very giving people, and they, and they volunteer their time just like you do. So we thank you for that.
Just another dentist over there volunteering. Come on, wave your hand, Emma. He's supposed to be up here. Dr. Emma Gavito.
The only dentist on the island, I think, right?
And people like to go to the island for everything, even dentistry.
Thank you, thank you.
No, we do have a resolution for you. Just trying to track it down. All right? It's, and if we don't have it, we'll get it, find everything, we'll get it to you. All right? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Move to acknowledge?
Hold on, I think, I think it's coming.
Can we move to acknowledge?
Second.
Presentation?
Yeah, why don't we do that? That was moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo, to acknowledge the presentation. You got it?
Here we go.
Y'all wanna come up for this? Please? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Jump them in here.
Thank you all very much. I expected to see Dr. Sellers here again, for some reason, you know, but... You're right, yeah. He's always come every year during this time, so, and he's always been a good volunteer, so...
Thank you all very much. Item three, presentation by the County Historical Commission, 2006 Annual Report. Larry?
My name is Larry Loff. I'm the incoming, uh, chairman of the County Historical Commission. Uh, normally, this report would be doing, be, be made by the outgoing, uh, chairman, uh, Mary Lou Rumbo, but, uh, as you know, she has moved away to be closer to family, so, uh, we're, we're pitching in to, uh, give last year's report. Uh, those of us who've grown up here, uh, sometimes forget how much history is in Cameron County. I mean, you know, if you just look at the 19th century, uh, and the wars that shaped the history of North America, one of those wars started here, and one of those wars ended here. And there, from all through the 19th century and into the 20th century, there is so much. Cameron Ha- County has some of the richest history of any place in the United States. And I think it's up to all of us to figure out ways of, of letting folks, uh, know more about it. Each year, the Cameron County Historical Commission is charged with providing to the state of Texas a report on all the activities of the commission and also to you. And I'm, uh, introducing, uh, this evening, Priscilla Rodriguez, who's the executive director of the Brownsville Historical Association. But she's also agreed this year to serve as one of several of the commission members who will form a liaison, uh, to this, uh, uh, organization. Uh, I sometimes disappear into the wilds of Mexico in part of my job, and I won't be around and be available. So, uh, several of these folks from around the county will be, uh, liaison. Priscilla is, uh, going to give you just a real quick overview of the report for this year, the last year.
Good evening. Okay. Last, last year, we had 37 members from all over the county serve on the commission. And with those 37 members, they approximately put in 11,650 volunteer hours. The commission continues to sponsor the history art contest. For all middle and high school students in the county, participate through their art, history, and social studies classes to compete for prizes awarded by the CCHC. Harlingen, Brownsville, and Port Isabel involve students in Day of the Dead programs and Hispanic Heritage Month at local museums and cemeteries. The Harlingen Historical Preservation Society has had youth from middle and high schools, boys and girls clubs, and cadets from MMA involved in a cemetery restoration program, working in the archives and participating in Rio Fest and the annual heritage festival. Port Isabel has started a junior volunteer program at its museums with 10 students from Port Isabel, Mercedes, and the Science Academy. We held a summer camp in Brownsville to teach people about the history of Brownsville, as well as storytelling and cooking classes, among various other programs. San Benito continues to work with youth in its Conjunto Cultural Center and Museum. And other communities as well included youth in historical-related celebrations. In the county, um, several of the organizations observed several, uh, historical observances, including county and city birthdays, National Preservation Week, Poetry Month in La Feria, the Harlingen Heritage Festival, Charro Days in Brownsville, and Fiesta de la Feria in La Feria, as well as Women's History Month, Black History Month, and Hispanic Heritage Month. The CCHC continues to strive to locate, identify, and preserve historical sites. There has been increased participation in the history art contests, and winning entries traveled for exhibition in various cities. The website has also been very successful with many hits nationwide. Numerous articles on the history of cities in the county have been added to the website in 2006. The city of Harlingen bought two downtown historic properties that were damaged in a fire in 2004, and removed the debris and has constructed a historic pocket park. In Harlingen, we continue to digitize our archives as well. Programs on the history and traditions of the area and towards... Programs on the history and traditions of the area and towards of historic sites are also offered year-round. In Rioondo, members are attempting to locate the site of the original marker at the Paso Real Inn for the purpose of installing a replacement marker. In San Benito, eight historic sites receive local markers, and two more will be dedicated in 2007. The San Benito Historical Society will also open a museum in 2007 in space being remodeled by the city. The space will house a society office, the Conjunto Hall of Fame, and the Freddie Fender Museum. A coalition of three of the museums and a cultural arts center in the city hired a designer to plan a heritage visitor center. In Port Isabel, the museums of Port Isabel continue to sponsor a variety of exhibits and programs, and presentations on the history of the valley. And currently, in Port Isabel, they are restoring two properties that are being restored by private individuals, the Historic Yacht Club and the Wireless Station in Port Isabel. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Priscilla is, is always very modest, but Priscilla is going to be recognized at the annual convention in the, for the State Historical Commission in April, in the Museum Excellence Awards, so she will be representing our area as we continue to be pointed out and recognized for the enormous diversity of history that's here. As Priscilla mentioned, this is a personal note, I guess, for my interest for this next year. I'm just vitally interested in, in doing whatever I can to help save the architectural history of the area. You know, one of the things that we have always done is identify and put medallions on buildings. That acknowledges the history of a building. But the problem with that is by just acknowledging the history of a building doesn't mean you save it. It just means, here is a bit of our history, and we're all proud of it, but that doesn't mean that it's going to survive for the next generation. I think that the challenge for us is to figure out how to make, and how to work within the community to save a lot of these old buildings. I mean, we're in a perfect and wonderful example of how to make an almost 100-year-old building live for today. And this can be done throughout the community. And so this is what I'm going to try to be involved in as much as possible this next year. You know, a building can't be just like an antique that sits on a shelf and looks nice. It has to serve the community today, and, and be reborn. As a matter of a couple of announcements, the representatives from the State Historical Commission will be visiting our area on March the 22nd, and I'll be sending an announcement, and possibly you all can come to a reception to meet them, because we haven't had them here in a while to, to begin to look at some of the sites that are important in the county. The second thing is that the annual convention of the State Historical Commission will be held in April 12th and 13th, and again, Cameron County is going to be acknowledged and recognized for its excellent work, and all the volunteerism, and Priscilla's is going to be pointed out in particular. A number of us are, are, have the pleasure of being there. So I hope to be back to talk to you pretty soon about things as they evolve in the county, and I appreciate the time, and, and looking forward to visiting you as we go through the year. Thank you.
Mr. Lauf, I'd, I'd like to comment. You talked about how perhaps we who live here don't recognize the significance of the history of our area, and I think that's very, very accurate. And I think anything we can do to improve the people's understanding of how, really how important our area is to Texas history and to the United States' history can only help all of us. I know that if you go into the Capitol Building in Austin, the main entrance, they have a terrazzo floor there. And as you enter the main doors, the front doors, in that terrazzo floor, they have names of different battles that took place in Texas, San Jacinto, the Alamo. I, I've counted them, and, and for the life of me, I can't remember whether it was 10 battles or 12 battles named in the floor that's part of the flooring. But out of those battles that are there, and I know it's not more than 12, three of them are from Brownsville. We have Palo Alto, Resaca de la Palma, and Palmito Hill. And I mean, you know, that, that in itself should let people know that the area that we live in, in Cameron County, is dramatically important to the history of not only Texas, but the United States.
Well, they clearly, so much, this was a crucible of change, and so much for the history of North America really was influenced by what happened here. Priscilla mentioned the website that is coming up, and that we're trying to make more active in all our museums. Historic tourism is becoming more and more important. Brownsville has the second or third highest number of historic buildings in the state of Texas. That doesn't include all the rest of Cameron County. When you think of that, people come because they love to see history. We grow up, and I'm, I'm guilty of this too, you know, you sort of assume that, oh yeah, the old building that was at the corner of, or the convent, or all those buildings that sort of disappeared over the years that we just took for granted. People come from all over the country to see. So the more that we can point out, the more that we can save, those buildings all talk about us, where we've been, and where we are, and where we're going. So, again, I'm pontificating. Again, it's a, it's a pleasure, and I hope to be visiting you again later, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You may want to give County Clerk Priscilla's last name?
That's Rosigas.
Thank you. Here, motion to acknowledge the Historical Commission's 2006 Annual Report by Commissioner Gadsa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, consent items, item number, well, first of all, is there any of the consent items that anyone would like to discuss separately?
I have, I don't know if Roger is here on 17, I'd like to, I need to ask the question.
Okay, you want to take that out?
Yep.
Okay, item 17. I'd like to take out item 19. And let's go ahead and take 18 out of order, so they can start doing that. This is consideration. Let's go ahead and just do it.
Do it all.
Item, yeah, consent items, four through 22, and the travel items, 23, 23A through 23K. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items and travel items, with the exceptions of items 17 and 19?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Thamayo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Executive session. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Gadsa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Executive session. A, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning management and purchase issues with the international bridge system on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning the proposed Florida de Mayo Bridge pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of land for the Dancy Building parking lot pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Lastly, item D, deliberation regarding real property concerning the development and leasing of a parcel of land, the flats at Andy Bowie Park immediately north of the South Padron Convention Center pursuant to same Code Section 551.072. We are in executive session. Commissioner Gadsa, second by Commissioner Thamayo. We are now out of executive session. Item A, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning management and purchase issues with the international bridge system. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel and proceed along the terms and conditions as discussed in executive session?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Thamayo, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Gadsa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item B, deliberation regarding real property on the Florida de Mayo Bridge. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel and to amend the sales agreement to include the rental of improvements?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, do I have a second? By Commissioner Thamayo, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item C, Commissioner Gadsa, you want to take that one?
Acknowledge report.
Deliberation regarding real property concerning the acquisition of land for the Dancy Building parking lot pursuant to VTC government code Section 551.072.
Motion to acknowledge report.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Thamayo, second by Commissioner Wood, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Please, on my attention, I was not present during those deliberations, because that includes a, a client of mine. All right, item D, deliberation regarding real property concerning the development and leasing of a parcel of land, AKA the flats at Andy Bowie. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the recommendation of the committee to reject all proposals.
Okay, move by Commissioner Gadsa, do I have a second? By Commissioner Thamayo, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let me take a couple of items out of order, because people need to go and catch a flight. Item 19. Item 19, consideration authorization to execute a construction contract with Cornet Construction Company for the Peterson subdivision sanitary sewer project. Frank, I had a question regarding the wording of the contract, you want to explain it, please?
I believe the question was, uh, if the contract was...
Can you turn on your mic, please? Is the mic on?
I believe the, the question had to do with how we would pay for the contract amount, which is $292,642.90. The county has a $274,000, $945 grant, and, and the difference to pay for the bid amount is coming from Olmito Water Supply Corporation, the area's service provider. But because the county is, is the contractor on the contract, we're in agreement with, with the contractor, Cornet, that we hired, so the question was, where does it say that Olmito will make up the difference in the contract? And it doesn't. This is a standard form of agreement that the county uses. Olmito, by resolution of their board of directors, agreed to provide the difference. As we go along in, in the project, first we use up all the grant funds to pay for the work that's done, and, and towards the tail end, when we need Olmito's contribution, they'll kick it in by depositing it into the county's account.
All right, that's good.
So you have the documentation.
Yes.
And if they don't agree to that, it'll be the last grant that will give them the work. You know, I mean, it's real simple. Move to approve. Second.
Okay, that was a move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gadsa, to approve the, and execute the construction contract with Cornet Construction, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 31. Have a nice flight. Um, what's 17?
Didn't you put 17 out?
Just to get it done. Remember I asked you to...
Oh, that was you. Okay. Item 17, consideration authorization to utilize the Texas Building and Procurement Commission's state contract for the purchase of two Hava compliant state-certified system ESNS optical scan model 650, central ballot tabulators.
I think Roger was here.
My question on this was, in this case, we have Hava funds to cover them, right?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. What assurances do we have that they were going to continue maintaining these models, and for how long?
Uh, we have none. Uh, the model, the 550s have been used for a number of years already, and according to what ESNS tells me, and yes, the state did, did require a different compliance with the Help America Vote Act that requires the 550s now to be replaced with the 650s. I just learned that, and the reason I, I was passing out some information is because some of that was not available to me. That includes a letter from the Secretary of State's Office approving the purchase of, and using the funds. But this 650s, the Model 650s, maybe, we may be using them for a number of years, how many, I do not know.
So they, they give no assurances of how long they will support them?
No, they don't, Commissioner.
Because all this company has to do is quit supporting their product, bring a new model, and sell us another one, you know? And it's kind of like...
But what choice do we have?
Uh, right now, we don't have a choice, being that...
That's exactly the point.
Yes. We don't have a choice, and I, I understand that the counties that are using the Model 550s, some of the counties are still using, were still using the, the other models, which is the 150, the 350, and they're no longer being serviced. So we, we cannot use them. Now, yes, they keep on making them better, and faster, and more efficient, more reliable, and they have to take it through the state, federal, so that they can be approved and certified. A copy of the certification letter is attached for your information also on it. But we were advised just recently that we, they were not going to be servicing the 550s. I called the Secretary of State's Office, and I submitted to them the letter that we received in regards to that. And so the only thing that I got from the Secretary of State was that they were going to be talking to them, because they were not aware that they were not going to be servicing the 550s that were, that were being used throughout the state, in those counties that these people serviced.
Is this going to help us have quicker results during elections?
Well, it's supposed to be more efficient. It's supposed to be a, a better machine, and take care of the problems that we had with the 550s, whereas when we received the mailing ballots, they were folded, and the 550s would very often jam because of those folds. This, this is a slightly different concept, where that ballot goes straight through and doesn't have to curve into another stack. And that curvature in the machine made it, made them stick together, and jam up, and so forth, so it was taking longer.
We're certainly going to have the capability, right? Because we can do 1,640 precincts, 30 parties, 300 candidates per contest, 500 contests at one time?
There's, there's, yeah, we're going to have a lot.
Remarkable.
And the funds are available, we have funds available through the Help America Vote Act, and after this, we will have approximately $67,000 still for any updates that may come up between now and the coming year.
I move to approve.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Gadsa, second by Commissioner Thamayo, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 31. Consideration possible action regarding contract with Net Data Corporation, Graves Humphreys Stall Limited for the Justice of the Peace Case Management Software and Collection System Program for Precinct 5-1 and Precinct 5-2. Hi, Sally, how are you?
I like it when the judge calls me Judge Sally.
Not Sally.
Not Judge Sally. Judge Sally. From the Valley is what they call me all around the state. Judge Wise and I are coming before the court on, on a topic that we've been here before, and that's to get our offices automated to be in the 21st century. We, we have brought vendors of different sources, different, you know, different areas of Texas that have, you know, that have software programs for us, and we've looked at them, we've done, we've looked at presentations, we've brought in presentations. And Judge Wise and I have sat long hours and talked about how are we going to bring our offices up to, up to par. When we went up to the technology conference, we sat down with the gentlemen from Net Data and discussed our concerns with them. That, you know, for six years, we honestly felt that we were being railroaded by a gentleman that worked in the computer center, and kept sending us, you know, like a horse to a lake, and the lake had no water. It was just not working for us. And we looked at different sources, and we looked at different areas of how we were going to provide, how we were going to pay for this. That's always been a major concern. How are we going to bring our forge to the 21st century, and how much is it going to cost? So we contacted Net Data, who is, I have two gentlemen here that will answer any questions that you all have regarding the contract that they are offering us. The contract that they are offering us, they are the only software company that has the court management plus the collections. And collections is a big issue, because... And collections is a big issue because, as you know and you are aware, that we have brought to the table on many times about how we have millions of dollars of outstanding fines out there because DPS is no longer, has a warrant database. And we keep getting backlogged and backlogged and backlogged on getting warrants. We can collect local warrants sometimes because we have officers that can go out and knock on some doors, but we have people all around the state that owe Cameron County money. And it's very critical at this time that we really look at this problem in a very serious mode. Net Data is here proposing to give Judge Wise and I a pilot program, basically. Start us as a pilot program at no cost to Cameron County. So therefore, we feel, why should it be going out for bids when there's nothing to bid on, when it's free? We're asking you to allow us to start giving our staff a program that is workable, that will bring us up to par, and that will completely manage our records. I just sat down with Judge Torres and his staff earlier. I've been here all day long. I've talked to Judge Magdalia Lopez. This company not only has programs for JPs, they can integrate every single office for Cameron County. They have an auditor's program, they have a tax assessor program, they have a tax collections program, they have, they can integrate all of, every office in Cameron County. But we want to start in our office with a pilot program. My staff is very up to par with what's needed in our office. I have two very tenured clerks. My clerks have been with me for ten years. They know what's needed in our office. And we have looked at other software programs out there. And the presentation that the gentleman from Net Data has given us is beyond reproach. I mean, they have an excellent, excellent program. And I'll let Judge Wise talk to you all also.
Judge, Commissioners. I know we've come before you previously regarding this very same issue. And I know one of the questions in your minds may be, well, what type of research have we've done? Judge Gonzalez touched on it, and I know she's just mentioned Net Data, but we have been studying and researching this for about a year now. We've attended and we've viewed other presentations from other software vendors. It's not that Net Data just that is making this offer and we're accepting what they're offering. It's something that we have put in a lot of hours. So it's not something that just has come about. We're lobbying for Net Data because they are prepared to propose to connect both courts at no cost as a pilot program. And on the back end, that we agree that they perform all the collections. And this is a collection fee that's an added cost. It's not where it will take away from any of our fees or fines. I believe statutorily, they can collect up to thirty percent as an added cost to the entire. And I think to get, to allow them to speak, I think they, you know, since they're a lot more well-versed in this area, I will give them an opportunity, or we will give them an opportunity to explain to you exactly. I know you all may have a lot of... I'd like to ask you a question. Who collects persons taxes right now? Delinquent accounts or delinquent fines?
My understanding, Commissioner Garza, is that we have a contract with Linebarger. I spoke to Mark Yates.
Have you had any delinquent fines collected in your court?
No, sir.
In the last one year?
No, sir.
Part of that problem is...
Not ever.
Not ever.
The program that Hamer was going to design was going to allow us to be able to refer them. They haven't got that part of it designed yet, so there have been none referred to Linebarger.
No, sir.
And their contract, I think, is probably expired by now.
I spoke to Mr. Romo from Linebarger, and I spoke to Mr. Lupe Samarriba from Linebarger at the state conference. And my concerns was, my office is not using Easy Justice. So I asked him point blank. I said, why is, why are you not collecting anything? We have not seen any collections. You know, unless it's something that's being sent to the auditor that we're not aware of that, and through my office. I asked him, I said, well, I'm not on Easy Justice. He said, well, we're not collecting through Easy Justice, Judge, because, one, that program is not complete. Secondly, what they have completed is not compatible to our program.
So, but the answer to my question is, the firm that we've contracted with to do our delinquent fine collections has collected zero...
Nothing.
From the JP courts.
Not in my office. I will speak from my office, and David has none for his.
Do you know how much you all have referred to them?
I, not from the top of my head, Commissioner.
Another question is, how many installations of this system are there? And I guess that question would be to the gentleman behind you.
Sure. This is Mr. Torrey Humphreys. He's the president of Net Data, and his associate is Dallas Osborne.
Right. Good evening. Thanks for having me here. First of all, I'm from Sulphur Springs, Texas, which is kind of the other end of the state. I would be remiss if I did not, I've been in probably a hundred and fifty courthouses. This may be the most majestic one that I've been in. So congratulations. I understand you guys have just gone through a pretty massive remodeling, so congratulations. To answer your question, Commissioner Garza, we have software in probably about a hundred and thirty-five Justice of the Peace offices in the state of Texas. And we only operate in the state of Texas. And if I may, just bear with me here, and I'll kind of get back to the point where Judge Sally and Judge Wise got us to. Net Data has been in business twenty-four years. We do business all across the state of Texas. I would just guess in probably sixty-five to seventy counties in the state of Texas that we do business with. And that's financial tax, law enforcement, the whole nine yards. Obviously, with JPs, there's multiple JPs in each county. Net Data, for our twenty-three years of our twenty-four-year history, is a software company. We provide county software. About a year ago, many of our JP customers, our software customers, came to us and said, because of this new state law, we need, we've hooked up with these delinquent attorney vendors to collect the delinquent fines and fees. We need to move the data from your program over to their program. And we rode a little bridge to do that. But in that, there was so much work that was created at the clerk level just to extract the data and to push it to the attorney firm. So what I figured out and what my associates figured out was, we were in an extremely unique position to combine the fact that this was our software and to get in the delinquent collections business. And so since that time, basically, I have spent the past eight or nine months in a Commissioner's Court, basically providing this collection services. Now, what they were referring to as the pilot aspect of this, every one that I have done this so far in on the collections, they were already a Net Data software customer. And so basically, I could go to their courts and say, for no cost, I'm going to start doing your delinquent fines and fees collections. And what's unique about what I'm doing is, where these other attorney firms, they're sending them the information once a month via an email or a tape, I'm actually, I dial in every night and extract the delinquent information so I can work on it immediately. It doesn't require any interaction for the clerks. Because again, it's my software. The big thing, though, and I'm sure you all have varying degrees of familiarity with the JP office, but before a case goes delinquent, there are a lot of things that has to be done, okay? Things that I can do that no one else would be interested in, because in fact, there's no money in that if it gets collected on time. What I'm doing for all my customers is doing all their courtesy notices for them, their pre-warrant letters, which is an extensive, a quite intensive process for these clerks. We can do it automatically. These NRVCs, which is, we have, Texas has these agreements with forty-eight other states. If I arrest a guy from Arkansas, there's paperwork that goes to his state, my state, and the offender. We're doing all of that. All of the filings to Omni, which is the driver's license thing, I'm sure Cameron County does, we take care of that. So, you know, basically, what I'm presenting here, that I've presented to every other county, is we can do all these things, we can make the process simpler on the delinquent. We can do all these things current, that there's no money in it for me, but it's my unique selling proposition, I guess you would say, and it doesn't cost the county a dime. Now, what is unique, what the pilot aspect of it that Judge Gonzalez spoke of, what is unique is, in this situation, I am offering my software, my training, my maintenance at no cost, basically in return for the collections business. Now, just the pricing normally would be, and I think actually Dallas gave Judge Gonzalez some pricing some months ago, you're probably talking about a forty thousand dollar per precinct price would be my normal, my normal price. And so we're waiving that forever. You would have no maintenance cost or anything. Another unique thing is here, our system runs, will run on the current hardware system that Cameron County has in place.
Let me ask...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Let me ask a couple of questions. What are the other JPs using, Judge Gonzalez?
Easy Justice.
And is it working for them? I mean...
Well, my understanding is that they're still trying to use Hamer Enterprises, Easy Justice. But like I said, I met with Judge Torres's people this afternoon. Joanne was so frustrated because she could not get the, the month report is still being done manual. That's unreal. Why are they, why do they have a court management program and still running manual reports is unreal? Judge Wise can speak. My office is still on OCA because my staff has never been able to process through Hamer and Easy Justice. It's just not a good program. Judge Wise can tell you what his clerks are going through, and they're just frustrated with this program. Judge Mangetta's people, or Judge Mangetta's clerk says, Judge, I'm on the phone with the computer center every single day. We had a meeting this afternoon with Judge Magdalia Audora, person from her staff, Mr. Sepulveda was there, you know, and I brought it to the table, you know? We want something that we can eventually integrate all offices. Net Data has that access.
Yeah, that leads me to my second question. Right now, is yours a standalone system, or will it be able to interface with other departments right now? Do you have a patch or something that will allow you to interface? Like, is the, are the other JP system, the Easy Justice, are they interfaced right now with any other departments?
Not, no.
No?
No, not at all. Not at all.
Okay, so we're not, are there any issues regarding the contractual obligations that we have with Hamer in terms of utilizing these folks?
I don't think so.
Richard.
Richard would be, you know...
Well, I guess my question is, do we have a contract with Hamer Enterprises, Easy Justice, right now, for they provide services to all the JPs?
It's a maintenance contract because what they did as well was, they decided that they would do it as a pilot program as well, and they would be charging them.
Another pilot program?
Right. But they were charging for maintenance, so what the contract...
Okay, so are there any contractual issues if we decide to allow Justice, Justice, wow? Judge Gonzalez and Judge Wise to go with this new, an improved pilot program? Are there any issues with anybody else?
I would have to look at the contract because it's been about two years, I think. Mark, two or three years, right, that they've been doing it?
........................................................................
Well, I'm not concerned about Linebarger. I'm concerned about the Easy Justice one, the ones that JPs are using.
It was also a pilot program, in all reality, Judge Coscos. My understanding is that Hamer Enterprises was only being paid like a maintenance agreement. And, you know, I talked to Paul this afternoon, and this program was being written by all the JPs and the, we were paying Hamer to write this program, but in all reality, it was being written by Rudy and his staff. And that's what, with the recommendations from eleven judges, and everybody wanted something different, and everybody wanted this, and everybody wanted that. And, you know, David and I kept, you know, piddling around or twisting our thumbs and saying, man, this isn't going to, it's not working, it's just not working. And it's still not working. And it's been six years, Judge Coscos, in Commissioner's Court, it's been six years that we have been so frustrated because we have a program that's not, it's just not workable, and it's keeping our staff always so tense. And I say staff from other offices because I've seen it. My concern, of course, and I thought maybe I'd have some of my other colleagues here, you know, in case they wanted to speak, they didn't show up. But at the, at the conference that we just went to, the technology conference we went to, there was three of my colleagues there, Judge Sanchez, Judge Gonzalez, and Judge Meneez. And they approached Net Data, they approached all the vendors that were there with the understanding that they were looking for other software because they were not happy with Easy Justice. They were there.
I've continually contended that Easy Justice has not fulfilled what was expected of them to start with.
They have not.
You know, they say it's our fault. I don't think it is. I think they just haven't done what we expected them to do. And as we've brought them before us before, most of the time, they didn't show up.
They have not showed up. I have approached Mr. Hamer on several occasions because I have been getting calls from other counties. Travis County was one, that he was out there trying to sell this product as a full-fledged Cameron County is running a hundred percent. It's the best program that's ever been created. And he's selling, out there selling this product, or trying to sell this product, misleading other counties that we're running at a hundred percent, and this program is not complete.
Okay. Any other comments?
My issue is, is the delinquent fines that are not being addressed. Because when we agreed to hire someone to do that, you know, I think it was, they were talking about millions of dollars associated with what is out there that is not being worked on at all. And at the risk of offending some of our constituents that might get bills, you know, we need to do that.
Judge Garza, I sat yesterday and I had...
Hey, man, you got a roll.
Just yesterday, I had Sergeant Garza from the Department of Public Safety come in and sign probable cause affidavits on over one hundred and fifty warrants that I signed yesterday, that all those need to be already in a collections process mode, and we don't have anywhere to send them.
I have another point, I mean, is Mike Forbes here? Mike?
Not here.
Or legal, or somebody, I mean...
At last I heard, and this hasn't been in the last couple of months, but three or four months ago, Hamer had not finalized the portion of the Easy Justice system that would allow referrals for delinquent collections. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And part of that, I don't know if the, part of the reason is, but recall when we went out for RFPs for this, Hamer was one that applied to do delinquent collections, and they were not chosen. Then all of a sudden, they never finished their program to be able to refer them to the one that was chosen.
Commissioner Garza, I just had a specific issue. Certainly after you raised the issue of which, for with regards to expected funds for Hamer Enterprises being able to interface with our delinquent tax attorneys for doing court collections. I had a meeting with Joe Garza, Sterling Pena, and Bill Hamer, and there was agreement at that time that the Hamer Enterprises would deliver a file layout and a set of court running documents to Linebarger. And I had a conversation with Bill Hamer about a month ago with regards to this. He said, Mark, once we did that and gave them that information, they did not respond.
Well, Mark, their contract expired almost a year ago. So when that information was provided to them, they had no longer, no longer had a contract with us.
Are you talking about the law?
Yeah, according to what you just said, you know, expired last June. Yeah, according to what you just said, you know, expired last June.
The contract with the line was a three-year, two-year period for the manual section. They're, they're under a real expectation now, they can be right.
Okay. On, in this regard, for Mr. Forbes, you know, is this something that, as a procurement type product, that we have to go out for proposals or go through the...
I, I met with Richard Borst on this last week and, to be totally frank, I understand what they're saying about a no fee as far as the software. And then I see the other side where you actually have a collection fee that brings revenue in for them. And I believe to lay all the cards on the table, there's firms that do not do both. They charge for collection. And then there's vendors that provide software independent of each other. And I think to really do justice to you all and lay all the cards on the table for the court to decide which option is in their best interest for Cameron County, you need to really do an RFP and allow for all versions, software, collection, both. And let the vendors propose on all three.
And I...
And then you lay it out and who really is giving you the best deal, you will be able to see in the numbers.
I don't think, I don't think that was his question. I think his question...
Is it legal to do what's presented here before us? I mean, can we enter into such an agreement?
Well, that would be for legal counsel to answer.
With the information that I received and Richard and I went over last week, it's being presented to you as a CISV state procurement technique or method to procure these services. In reviewing the, this CISV program, Richard, were you able to share a copy of that with the court?
That CIS, like Miami CIS?
CISV, Catalogue, Information, Services, Vendor, CISV. On the state procurement system, there's a best practice guideline for CISV programs. And what they recommend is that an RFO request for offer be utilized and solicited out to have at least three CISV vendors respond back to the county.
Now, I was looking at the conversion agreement and enlighten me on this, I might not, I might be naive on this. On page two of two, number three, buyer recognizing that other services may be needed for seller agrees to pay standard hourly billing rate of $120 per hour and expenses in return for other services that are not included in this contract. So I have no idea what that would turn to.
Well, I'm, I'm hearing information here that we knew a year ago and they've been here, this has been going on for four or five years and, and, or six years and, and no one's ever really done anything. And now, well, let's go out for RFPs and stuff like that, you know. I just have one more question. What, what is the downside to doing this?
Okay, great question.
Oh, my questions are great.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I hope, maybe you were addressing that to me. Let, let me clarify one point. The pilot aspect of this, I'm a little uncomfortable with. Again, we have software in 130 JP's in Texas. This is the same application, okay?
Oh, I don't think, I don't think that your software is a pilot.
Okay, okay.
I think that, no, don't, don't, yeah, don't misunderstand. I just think that what you're doing here is, is, is a nice accommodation, you know, for two JP's at once. And it, and it's apparent to me that, that this problem, that, that at least these two that are willing to come forward and acknowledge and admit to...
Yes.
Has been going on for, for several years.
Several years, yes, sir.
So I think it's time to move on and, you know, fish your cut bait.
There, uh, the downside, okay? Again, there is no money to the county in this situation. The contract that you're referring to, Commissioner, is a standard contract. Again, I am, I'm rolling the dice somewhat, okay, based on the delinquent collection opportunities. And so what I'm basically doing is I'm waiving any other cost related to maintenance, training, software installation perpetually, okay? As, as long as the delinquent contract stays in place.
You know, perpetually means forever, ever.
As, as long as the delinquent contract stays in place.
All right.
Uh, now, as far as the procurement issue, and if I'm allowed to, I will just address that a little bit. No, no, no one we've ever done this with has gone out for bid for this particular, the, the collection, the, the professional services aspect of this, okay?
Because the pilot, the same process that you're offering us, is that it?
Not, not with the software as a piece of it, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, they already had, they already had the software. Yes, ma'am. Uh, the difference being here is, is there's no cost tied to it in your situation. Now, the sole source issue has come up somewhat, okay? As, as we mentioned too earlier, there are other companies that have software. I'm not the only company that has software for JP's, okay? I'm also not the only company that provides delinquent services, okay? To my knowledge, I am the only company that bundles those together and, and provides that process, okay? I'm also going to be one of the only ones that does all that, that also runs on the system that you currently have in place. And it doesn't, there's, there's no cash out, no, no cost associated with it. So, you know, the QISV option he mentioned as well, this, this process has never been bid before, but, but I understand where you, where you're coming from.
I, I don't have any problem at all with accommodating what our JP's need to be able to do what, what we need to have them done and, and to be able to collect the delinquencies and be able to operate their offices appropriately and properly. However, I, I do want you all to be aware that we are going to be going through a, an audit of all of our computer systems.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know what will come out of that. If it comes out that there's a program or something that we probably really need to get into in order to be able to interface and connect without any bridges and all this other stuff, not only the JP's, but the district courts and the county courts and the, the county clerks and the district clerk and the DA's office...
Right.
Then we're probably going to be looking at doing that.
Right.
You know, and, and it may be six months down the road or a year down the road, I don't know.
Right.
And I realize we have a 30-day out.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'd hate to see you invest $40,000 six months down the road.
Well, that's business, you know? Uh, you, you, you make good faith efforts to, you know, my, my reaction would be, if, if I do the job that I'm supposed to do, then they're going to come back in here and they're going to...
It may be your system that works everything.
Yeah, they're, they're going to say, "Hey, these, these guys were great. They said, they did everything they said they would do." And so my chances of, of getting further business obviously escalate. If, if I don't do a good job, I'm not going to get that other business anyway.
You got two judges sitting there that'll let us know.
Right, absolutely. I'm, you know, I'm not going to get your business anyway. And so it's, it's worth the risk to me and, and the neat thing from your perspective is you have no, there's no risk, there's no investment. So if 10 months from now, you pick a whole new direction, you really, you lost nothing, basically. There's no risk.
Which means that you have the motivation to make it work.
Absolutely, and that's, that's a good point. And, and county government being that that's all I do, counties aren't like businesses. They, they share information, you know, the...
Well, you know, if, if, if it's not illegal to do this and go into this contract, I would like to move that we proceed with what we've been presented.
And I was just bringing that up so you're aware that we are fixing to go through a process.
Yes, sir. And that actually...
That would be fair with you.
I'm, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I didn't remember who.